Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting. Wednesday, April ninth, eight thirty a.m. in the City Hall Council Chambers. As we always do in our great city of Bradenton, we start out with our invocation and our pledge. And this morning, we're going to have Lead Pastor Sam Rainier with West Bradenton Baptist Church. Could all please stand?
Thank you. Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessing of living and serving in this wonderful city. I ask for your guidance and discernment for our mayor, for our city council, for all the employees. Lord, I also pray for the homes that are represented here. Because, Lord, when families are healthy, our community is healthy. And so, God, we just ask for your blessings on everyone that lives here. And it's in your son's name, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Can the veterans in the room raise your hand? Do we have any veterans in the room? Obviously, we'd like to thank you for your service and really celebrate that. And if you all can kind of start us out with the pledge today. Allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Pastor. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
The first item on the agenda this morning is a proclamation for Autism Awareness Month, which I'll read on behalf of the mayor. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a complex developmental condition affecting millions of individuals worldwide, characterized by challenges in communication, social interaction, and behavior. And whereas individuals with autism contribute significantly to their communities, demonstrating unique talents, perspectives, and achievements. And whereas increasing awareness and understanding of autism is essential for fostering acceptance, inclusion, and support for individuals and families affected by autism. And whereas the month of April is dedicated to promoting autism awareness and encouraging the action to address the needs and rights of individuals with autism. And whereas organizations, advocates, and communities work tirelessly to provide resources, education, and support for individuals and families affected by autism. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty five as Autism Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to join in spreading awareness, showing support, and fostering a society that embraces diversity and inclusion. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chief Bevan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see here in the back and here in the row, and as I'm speaking, if you all can make your way up to the podium to include Manager Knight. This is a Hedlund family. They're going to introduce themselves. But very recently, they came to our agency from across the state. I know yesterday, they drove across the state, had to spend the night last night just to be here for this proclamation today, to provide training for all of our officers. I know the fire department sent some representatives, the state attorney's office, some various agencies throughout the area. And their message is powerful. It's strong. And I think it makes us better as an agency and as a community to hear what they say. I have to give a shout out to Manager Knight. She saw their name in a paper a few years ago. They were kind of smaller at that point, that they were providing training to police organizations. And she gave them a call, and they've been our community partners ever since. So if you want to hear from them-
Chief, tell us about the shirts first.
So these are autism awareness shirts. We actually partner with an organization up north. They held a golf tournament last year. And all of the proceeds from this golf tournament was provided to the Bradenton Police Department, their foundation, to support autism awareness and education. And that's exactly what we're doing with this money. These shirts, and when we get the badges, they'll come in soon, we're going to actually have autism badges. And these shirts are meant for people to ask you, hey, why are you wearing the blue polo with the color on the sleeve? Is to talk to them about this, you know, what autism's all about and how it impacts our community and our police department.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. I couldn't have said that better myself. My name is Margie Hedlund. As the chief said, I serve on the board of the Directors for the Autism Society of Florida. We are made up of parents. We are all volunteers. My family and I travel from Pensacola military bases to Key West fire departments. We train military and first responders how to communicate better with people with special needs. We are a law enforcement family. I'm a retired public information officer. And my husband just retired after almost thirty-seven years in law enforcement. But the stars of our family are our sons. This is Martin. Say hi, friends.
Hello.
Dalton, you say hi, friends?
Hi.
Martin and Dalton are eighteen years old. They were both diagnosed with autism when they were two and a half. And when they were diagnosed, the world told us a bunch of things they were never going to do. And we decided that wasn't okay.
And take matters-
And we took matters into our own hands, didn't we?
Yes.
They didn't speak until they were five and six years old, and now they never shut up. But we love it.
That's a good thing.
So, five years ago, Captain Knight, like the chief said, saw an article in the magazine and called us and said, hey, would you guys come to Bradenton? We did. This pastime was our third time being with y'all. And we keep you guys very close to our hearts. We take y'all very personal. So much so that when she called a couple days ago and said, hey, can you get your board member that lives around Bradenton to come to a commission meeting and say a few words? We sat in our house, five hours away, and said, that's our town. Uh-uh. So we loaded up the van, took him out of school, and here we are. We love y'all. You guys do it right. Your police department, your fire department, everybody we've worked with. Just amazing. Captain Knight is such an amazing host. When we come, the hotels know us, the restaurants know us. They know why we're here. And I don't know if you guys saw, after we were here two weeks ago, your public information officer, she did a post and shared it. Your community loves you for this. They went nuts. Thank you, Bradenton. Thank you. You made the families living with kids who have special needs in this community feel loved. You made them feel seen, and you made them feel heard. And before we leave, we just want to schedule our next training because we love being here and just thank you to the city of Bradenton. You guys are amazing, and you do it right. Thank you so much. That's us. Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello, everyone. And I appreciate, and thank you for, and thank you for inviting my family over to Bradenton many times to educate your first, your fire and police forces about autism.
Thank you. Dalton, you want to say hi real quick? Because he'll just keep talking. Say hi.
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 Do you like doing your autism trainings?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We want to get a picture, so.
Yes, please. I love photos.
If you guys want to come up here, and we can kind of line up.
Sure, wherever you want.
And when Mom retires-
What, baby?
When Mom retires, me and Dalton will take over.
I hate that retirement.
Bracelets for friends. Daddy, you have more?
Thank you.
Hey, Jean. Appreciate it.
Grab a stand by mommy, please.
Everybody got, Rob, you got one?
Yep.
Yep.
Here, I like to be in between them. They make me look there. You stand there. There you go. All right, look at friends in the audience.
Jane, turn sideways.
Am I there? Oh, sorry.
Put everybody in.
Go down right behind.
Look straight ahead. Pretty lady in dress. There you go. All right, look at pretty lady in white shirt. Everybody look. Pretty lady in white shirt.
Don't forget the bald guy on the right.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you coming down. Thank you. Counselwoman Coker?
So much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I recently, very recently, had a member of our community who, there was an interaction with a special one of our residents on her street. And she was complimenting, I know she talked to the chief, about what a positive situation it ended up being and could have been, you know, very concerning. So I just, what you're doing, keep doing it because it's working.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Counselwoman Coachman?
And I would like to say, as a speech-language pathologist, I have the honor and privilege and pleasure to work with students that have ASD. And they make, they make my job fun, and they make my job interesting, and they make my job feel good.
Interesting's a good word.
Yeah.
Y'all, please forgive me. Your board member that lives in your community, she just walked in. She's a few minutes late. But I want to recognize that-
Why don't you bring her up to the podium so everybody can see her?
Daniel, come say hi.
Yeah, and I think it's something that, obviously, Chief Bevan's and her whole group does a great job at in getting it started. We've seen things on social media and TV where sometimes, you know, a stop or if they don't have the education, they don't understand that there might be a little bit different of a need to help. And that's what we've been important to us.
We've trained over seven years, and we've trained likely over ten, we've trained over ten thousand people.
And I use y'all as example when I go to other cities. Well, that's all right. That's just Samuel. He's relaxing. It's okay. And I was telling Captain Knight that usually when I leave a city, I have like four or five people that right at the bottom of the evaluation, we want more information. I had over fifty-three from y'all. That's wonderful. That means they want more information. They want to learn things. We give them sensory bags to put on y'all's fire trucks. And you guys are engaged. This town doesn't just sit and listen to the trainings. They respond. They engage. Y'all are amazing. It speaks to the police department, the leadership. It's great. You comfortable, Samuel? Are you good?
Welcome, Samuel.
And this is Miss Annette. She, you don't live in Bradenton. You live in Parrish. But she's also on our board of directors.
We love Manatee County.
Manatee County, yes.
Well, welcome, and thank you for what you do for the education and getting the information out. Thank you, Daniel, for coming.
All right, Samuel. We're out of here.
Samuel.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Item three B is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week proclamation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers and firefighters is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the city of Bradenton Emergency Communication Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, they are a vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunications of the Bradenton Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each dispatcher continually exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim April thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty five, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Bradenton, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. And who do we have here today?
I'm going to introduce Brad, but just to say a few words first. As everybody knows, I do personalized birthday cards. Every birthday card that goes to one of our comp center employees recognizes the fact that we inherently know that they are our lifelines. They keep our officers safe out there. They monitor their every step, their every minute. Without them, we are nothing. They are our connection with life-saving, with the community. They mean everything to us. We only have Brad here, who is our manager, because all of his other employees are working or sleeping, and it's just kind of hard to bring him here ever since we moved. But I think you see in the back of the room, a cadre of officers and supervisors who are here in acknowledgement and thanks for what they do every single day. They are just a critical part of our family, of everybody's family, and we can't thank them enough. I actually went out to the building yesterday and realized it doesn't officially start to the thirteenth. So I just circled it and came back, you know. But what they do is incredible. Brad?
I just want to say thank you for your continued support. It does mean a lot. We've got a communication center that, I believe, we have two that are there with our city for over twenty years. Two of us that are over fifteen years, and I want to say four or five of us now that are over five years. So we are retaining good employees who are dedicated to the city. So, thank you.
Well, Brad, I just want to say thank you. I know there was some transition that we did a few years back in getting into the comp center we're in now, kind of tying it with the county. And that was a little bit of a heavy lift at the time. But I hope things have smoothed out like we know and really made it better because number one thing is serving the citizens. And I think through all the storms we had last year, it showed that, you know, it was a good move. And I know through fire, and there was a lot of angst at times, but it seems to be working pretty well.
Vice- The co-location with the county were communications. So it definitely increased the quick ability to move our first responders to the correct locations as quick as possible. So it's definitely shown as a good decision.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kramer?
Thank you, Mayor. Brad, congrats on this week. It's a recognition of the hard work you all do all year. The mayor mentioned during the storms, I mean, your people are at risk coming in to cover the shifts. But we really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. All right, let's get a picture. But I want everybody from the police department up here for this picture around us. Yep.
Just leave it off at this point. Hits more than anyone.
Lay it on your back foot. Lean up.
I know, that's the way I am.
It's kind of a boss.
They can zoom in on the picture.
Well, here's another one. He's even taller than you. That's all right. You guys are the important part.
Yeah.
Stand up tall. No one was blinking.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Tell everybody.
Very true responders.
Madam Clerk?
Our next proclamation is for National Arbor Day, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. This holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as the mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as National Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program by planting trees. By planting trees, we help to promote the well-being of present and future generations and enhance our community. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Who do we have coming forward for this? Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you all. We don't have any representatives from Tree Board here today. They're a volunteer board, so they have a meeting next, this Friday. So hard to get them out here in the morning. But I do just want to point out that they've had a couple giveaways of trees. Thank you very much. That those funds come from our Tree and Land Preservation Board. And they have some upcoming giveaways at the public market, April twenty-sixth and May thirty-first, in addition to an April nineteenth event at the Dream Center. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I know that the excitement, and I was at the, Karen's here, she's speaking in a minute, but at the market, come up, get a picture. We want to get a picture. You got to get in it. But the, I know they were giving out the tree, he's keeping it beautiful and that, and gave out several hundred trees that day, and people wanted more. So it's a good thing, and we appreciate the market allowing them to have a space to give them out and is what all of the groups do to keep that going. So come on up, get a picture. We're going to get Mr. DeLonge and Ms. Robin in it, so. Keep them going. We'll wait for Ms. Singer. Tell them they could have gotten a picture.
Sorry about that.
You're fine. Thank you. Appreciate you guys keeping that board going. Madam Clerk?
Our last proclamation this morning is for Turning Point's thirtieth anniversary month, April twenty twenty-five. Whereas Turning Point has been dedicated to serving the residents of Manatee County for thirty years, providing essential resources, support, and advocacy to individuals and families facing homelessness and financial hardship. And whereas, since its founding, Turning Point has worked tirelessly to prevent and reduce homelessness by offering vital services, including housing assistance, community resource navigation services, medical and dental care, employment support, and basic needs assistance, ensuring that individuals in crisis receive the help they need to regain stability and independence. And whereas, Turning Point has built strong partnerships with local businesses, nonprofit organizations, faith-based communities, and dedicated volunteers who have contributed their time, talents, and resources to support its mission and strengthen our community. And whereas, the impact of Turning Point is evident in the thousands of lives transformed through compassionate care, innovative programs, and unwavering commitment to making a difference in the lives of those in need. And whereas, on this thirtieth anniversary, we recognize and celebrate the dedication of Turning Point staff, board members, volunteers, donors, and community partners who have worked selflessly to create a brighter future for individuals and families in the city of Bradenton. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Turning Point's thirtieth anniversary month, and urge all citizens to continue their support of such a worthy organization. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. And who do we have here? Great group. Good morning and welcome.
We appreciate all of the support that it takes to do the work that we do. I think people are very surprised when we say we serve over nine thousand people a year because they go, wait, we have nine thousand homeless people in Manatee County? But they forget that eighty percent of the work that we do is preventing homelessness. Forty-four percent of Manatee County lives paycheck to paycheck, doesn't have enough money to support themselves if they needed to pay their bills without a paycheck for two months. And that's the snowball that can end in becoming unhoused. And so these folks here, our board, our volunteers, our staff, do tirelessly work. It is, it's hard work, and we love doing it. And we are so thankful for the partnership. There is no one agency that will ever prevent or truly end homelessness on their own. It takes the people, the citizens, the city, the county, the businesses, all of the other nonprofits coming together to do the work to support our neighbors who are in need. So we greatly appreciate the partnership that you've given to us over the last thirty years. We keep growing and evolving and changing and trying to meet the changing needs. This community doesn't look the same at all, and we have to keep evolving. So we appreciate that partnership and our hundred and forty active volunteers who are the heartbeat of the work that we do. So thank you so much.
All right, tell us about what you have coming up pretty soon, May second.
Our event, we have a fun, sometimes you just got to have fun. And we do with our hats, heels, and bow ties event. I know some of you come and join us for that. It's a lot of fun. Chief Bevan always gets up there and struts her stuff on the catwalk for us. And we really appreciate it. It's to raise money, to continue the important work, and to raise awareness. Sometimes, like I said, you just have to have a little bit of fun and enjoy each other, so. We also have, this is our thirtieth year, of course, so we have open houses that are happening throughout the year. We have one this Thursday. That's, they're five to seven p.m. You can see all of the other dates on our website because we want to educate people. Again, people are shocked at the amount of work we do to prevent homelessness. You know, we just started a partnership with the Manatee County School District to take families with school-aged children, get them out of their cars and out of the hotels and into housing. And we just started that at the end of the year. We've housed six people. We have about seven more who are ready to go into housing in the next couple of weeks. And these are, you know, children who will not have to have that experience and the trauma that comes along with that long-term homelessness. And so we want to educate the community. There's new things happening. If you came last year, you're outdated. Come back. We would love to have you come and take another tour and share the word because we do believe that we're the best kept secret in Manatee County, so.
Comments before I go? Ms. Barnaby, and then Vice Mayor Kramer?
Could you please let us know a little bit more about the event, about the ticket?
Could you please let us know a little bit more about the event, about the tickets and how to get them and what they cost?
Thank you. Margie was probably going to give me an elbow out of the way here in a second. So folks can purchase tickets online at, if you go to our website, tpmanatee.org. You can call Turning Points. We can walk you through the process as well and purchase. It's May 2nd. It's a lunchtime event at The Grove in Lakewood Ranch. It's a lunch. It's some fun. It's an auction, so we have raffles and silent auction items. What else should I share? What did I miss? He's been on the catwalk many times. Yes, he has.
But tickets are $75, and there's tickets available, and sponsorships are available too.
Vice Mayor Kramer.
Thank you, sir. Thank you again for everything you all do. I've been fortunate to be on the Leadership Manatee Board for the last three years, and the day I facilitate is Human Needs Day. And I always reach out and sometimes the last minute to Kathleen, but that's because she knows that I'm going to be bringing the class there to see everything you do. And it is interesting how it changes year to year. I can attest to that over the last three, actually last four because of my class, that now the partnership with Goodwill for clothing is really going to help the entire area. So thank you.
Anyone else before I say some things? I think we have an opportunity. The other day we met at the county meeting with Dr. Marbut that is going to give us an opportunity. As I said, and I know Kathleen, Ms. Kramer, you got up there and talked greatly, that we said that we as a community are going to make a difference. It can't be just the city's problem, or it can't be Turning Point's problem. It's got to be, and I say problem, we're helping people. But we're going to sit there and we're going to make a difference for our community, Manatee County-wide. At our April 30th meeting workshop, we're going to have a presentation by Commissioner Ballard, and we'll probably just watch the video of Dr. Marbut's speech. So it can tell what we're doing as a collaboration. And I think we have opportunity, and I'm confident this council is bought in to when the right times to make the right ordinances and the right things to help, that will show people that we're here to make that difference. And I say we as a collaboration of all of us, because again, none of us can do it in a silo. And we got to make it together. We've got to work for the good of the whole, and I'm confident we have that group going now. So I appreciate you guys, and I know 30 years is a long time, but it's not. It's just the beginning. So, and just looking at you smile, Ms. Kramer, tell us a little bit about your, your dental program that's won national awards. So just because that makes confidence in anybody is what makes the difference. So give us a little quick synopsis of that.
Absolutely. We just won another award.
That's why I was saying.
A Tampa Regional Award recently in partnership with Manatee County, who helps fund that program. Project Smile has been happening for a little, about 11 years now, helping people who have, who need dentures because their smile has been deteriorated through lack of care and lots of different reasons. And so a smile is your presentation to the world. We have many folks who come to us, not only not able to eat properly, eat and chew, they're in pain, but also just the self-esteem that comes along with it. And they cannot, we've had many tell us they can't move forward in their career, their job. Their boss has said, you're great, but I can't make you a manager because then you're customer-facing, and this isn't the representation I want for my business. And so we have a completely free dental and medical center at Turning Points, and so we serve about 150 individuals every year are able to get a completely new smile. They put the work in. It's about seven appointments. They have to, some of them have to have full mouth extractions, gum recontouring. I mean, it is a lot of work. And they know though that new smiles equal new opportunities, so they hang in there and they love it. And that's one of my favorite programs because I'll hear like clapping and cheering coming from the other side of the hallway there. It's always somebody who's strutting out with their new smile for the first time, and the team will clap for them and cheer for them. It is, it's a confidence booster. It's a game changer for folks. And our, the individuals who come have no insurance, so they wouldn't be able to afford this on their own. They are low-income uninsured Manatee County residents, and we're proud to serve them with that program.
All right. Thank you. Margie? Hold on. You got to get up and say one last thing. And it's not the event, but tell us about Be the Key Society, that if people are watching, they could, how can they help?
Absolutely. So the Be the Key Society is a fabulous group of donors who believe in our mission. So they make a pledge every year for five years to keep us going. They know what we're doing. They, now, we don't have to start at zero every year. So it's a fabulous group. We have a lot of people in this room that are Be the Key Society members, including on the board, us, you know, and it's really, it's, it's just, it's a testament of who we are and our community, and us working together to serve everyone.
So just go to turningpoints.com and find it.
TPmanatee.org, and go to the Be the Key Society, and anyone can join. It's just making a pledge for five years.
And I didn't realize it was only five years. I thought it was a lifetime.
Just yours. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Come up, can we come up here and get a picture? Thank you. Isn't there a former board member out there in the audience?
He's not listening.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys. All right. Thank you, everyone, for that indulgence. But I think when we look at what happens in our community with all the events that go on, and, and Bradenton is still a small town. When you look at who's in this room and what we do, and what people try to do to help each other. So I think, you know, we don't have a lot of proclamations like that every time, but, but it's worth celebrating those proclamations when, when they do come up. So. Madam Clerk.
We do not have any presentations scheduled this morning.
Okay, so we'll get to citizen comment. And citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting of any non-agenda items. Agenda items, future agenda items, are topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. We do remind everybody, this is the business meeting. So as far as, you know, making comments from the audience, or gestures, or noise, or applause, or boos, it will not be accepted because this is a business meeting. We, we're going to respect you. We also are going to ask that everyone address the dais properly. If you're talking to a council member, our attorney, our administrator, our fire chief, our police chief, or any of us up here, you do address them with the proper titles. As we respect you, you need to respect the dais. So at this time, I'll call Karen Corbin, and please state your name, your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Karen Corbin. I'm the Executive Director of Realized Bradenton. We are on Manatee Avenue West in Bradenton. I'm here today. As all of you know, BAM Fest was held this weekend, and I know that many of you here and in this room attended on Saturday. I truly hope that you and your families thoroughly enjoyed the experience. I plan on coming back later at a later date and sharing a full report about the event. However, I'm here today to say thank you. On behalf of Realized Bradenton team and thousands of community members who came out to celebrate with us on April 5th, we thank the City of Bradenton for your support. From the initial planning stages to the final cleanup, commitment to BAM Fest was incredibly positive. We went to specifically, we want, I want to specifically acknowledge the incredible efforts of several key departments. To the Bradenton Police Department, we extend our sincere thanks, ensuring the safety and security of all of our attendees. Your assistance prior to the event and all the way through made our attendees feel relaxed and safe, and they enjoyed the festival. We appreciate you and all that your team did because we kind of called a lot, asking a lot of questions, but thank you so much. To all that worked in the sanitation department, your team was nothing but phenomenal. The seamless and efficient way in which they managed everything, from the setup through the evening to the cleanup, was remarkable. You worked tirelessly behind the scenes to make sure that Riverwalk remained clean and welcoming for everyone. We appreciate each and every person on their teams. And finally, to the Public Works and the Utilities Department, I swear, by the end of this event, we talked to every employee you had. We asked more questions. We asked more favors, and everyone did it with a smile, like, what do you need? What do you need? It was truly amazing. Their support was instrumental in the smooth execution of BAM Fest. The many site visits, phone calls, conversations made a significant difference in the overall success of the event. Yes, we still have everybody's phone numbers, and you probably will hear from us again on the next event. BAM Fest is more than just a one-day event. It's an investment in our city's cultural landscape, a platform for local artists, and a catalyst for our community connection, which is so vital to us. Mayor Brown, you and everyone sitting up here on the dais, and all of your city workers, we thank you for your ongoing confidence and support in the work that we do and bring together the people of Bradenton and Manatee County for this event. Your partnership is invaluable.
All right. Thank you. Next we'll have Rodney Jones. We'll get more on that. Welcome, Mr. Jones. Please state your name, your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes. Sure.
Hey, greetings. Rodney Jones. I'm here again because I put on the record last week that we have a confirmation from the Bradenton Police Department due to a public records request that Chief Bevan denied me of my 14th Amendment due process and equal protection under law for years for not doing any of the complaints that I've been down here filing for years, that you all have seen, have admitted that I've been down here. None of those complaints have been investigated. No case numbers, no findings. That's against the law. It's a violation of Florida Statute 838.022. It's official misconduct. Chief Bevan shouldn't be sitting, sitting in, anywhere in the City of Bradenton right now, but it's because of you all that she's allowed to break the law and continue. So last week, I, I filed a complaint, another complaint with the Bradenton Police Department, got my first case number ever from the Bradenton Police Department. Never got a case number before. Got my one, naming Jean Brown and Chief Bevan in official misconduct for not doing not only my investigations, but numerous investigations from the community. This is going to cost the City of Bradenton millions of dollars in damages. I'm just here to help. So what I did was also went to HR because what Jean Brown is doing is using third-party investigators to circumvent the processes for human resources. She, Chief Bevan is an employee. She goes through the same processes as everyone else. What you see here on this map is the smoking gun, and this is why everything is going on. This is a map of stolen property. This came from the property appraiser's office. It was, it was confirmed by Ken Burden, the tax collector, that this document is fraudulent. This document actually belongs to the State of Luther Ware, who we came in and filed a murder complaint on January 3rd and 4th of 2023, shortly after I was arrested in a, in a meeting here that silenced me, and they did not do the complaint, and the complaint is there. They gave us a fake case number, and not one of you who took a sworn oath of office to protect, to support, protect, and defend the Constitution will ask one public question of anything I'm saying, and we've got it on the record. I want to learn, I want to alert you that the feds are on to this. We've been doing, we've been following Jean Brown, Mayor Poston, for six years. We've got enough information to have everybody up here, including each one of you elected officials. We've got enough to have you federally indicted because you've sat here for years when I've been coming down here and other people coming down here, and we don't have one investigation on file. It's against the law. So once again, I'm doing my due diligence. I'm building a case against all of you. That's why I'm here. I've been told to come and keep coming and keep coming and doing it. And not one of you, so Pam Coachman, you're...
Excuse me, sir. Address her properly.
Pam Coachman.
As a, as a councilwoman.
Pam Coachman.
Sir, please address her.
It's a freedom of speech. I address her however I want to.
Properly to this dais, Mr. Jones.
Pam Coachman, you're my Ward Five. You need to ask them, just ask Chief Bevan, is anything, any element of what I'm saying true? That's all I want you to do. Save yourself. Don't follow up with these corrupt people because Pam, just the fact that you're black.
Barbara Person Tercigni? If I said that right, Tercigni?
Tercigni, Tercini, however you like to say it.
Thank you. Please state your name for us correctly, and your city of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Barbara Person Tercini. I live at 13 Columbia Street, Braden Castle Park. And I just wanted to come to give everyone good news about last week's water testing on the Manatee River. We were at 31 CFUs, which anything under 70 is safe. So that means fishing and swimming, all those things, you know, were good. We tested water yesterday. I don't have those results yet. But it's good news for the city and for everyone, and, and I just wanted to let you know that. So maybe no storms, maybe less things happening. But I just wanted to make you aware of that because we really do appreciate everything that you're doing. You know, we know everything takes time, and we know that we may not always have the patience that we would like to have on certain instances, but I just want to let you know that as an individual, getting to know the City of Bradenton outside of Braden Castle Park, I'm enjoying getting to know all of you and seeing what you do and how you treat the city and how you treat the people. So I just want to let you know how much we appreciate everything that you're doing and that working together, moving forward. We, I'm an optimist, we believe that all good things will come from it. So thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Gary Penoyer. Please state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary Penoyer. I also live at Braden Castle. I'm the, on the Board of Directors there, and I'm also the dock master there. What I bring for you today is, first of all, I would like to tell you how much we appreciated your support after the storms, everything you did. You made some promises that you would be there for us. My issue now is, is I don't seem to be able to get build construction permits through, through your offices. I'm trying to rebuild the north dock that was destroyed in the storms. It's been 90 days. I, I, I'm new at this, and probably part of this is my fault, things that I've done wrong. So if it's not my fault, I was just wondering if there's, I, I understand the severity and what you guys are going through. But I was just wondering if there's ways to, you know, put some best practices at use here to streamline some of this stuff for things. We're not new construction in any way. I don't know, you know, you have a novice here wondering why we need the type of investigation and, and research done on something that's been there 70 years that we're trying to replace and, and bring up to code. It's just the timeliness of this is, is, is oppressing. I'd appreciate anything you could do for us at this point in time to move this along. If there's anything I can do, please let me know. Again, thank you for all the support you've given us so far. I just ask that we, if you could, do anything you could for us to get this moving along. This is, you know, one of our amenities. It's a cash stream. We're trying to get up off of our knees down there. And I, I just have a little bit of a feeling that you're, they're standing on my neck a little bit to get this done. I, I'd just like to do something about that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Next we have Linda Sebold. Good morning. If you state your name, your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. I'm Linda Sebold, and I live at 315 Crescent Court, Bradenton. Again, too, I want to tell all of you guys how much I appreciate you guys, every single one of you, and what you also did for us during the storm. We are neighbors to Braden Castle. My concern today is the location of lift station number 13. That lift station now has been a temporary lift station for approximately eight to 10 years. Right now, the lift station that is out there, it is on wheels. It is more temporary than you can ever imagine. And if we do get a chance, I'd love for you to come out and And if we do get a chance, I'd love for you to come out and look at it. It is something that, right now, there is an old septic tank that is serving as a well. This external pump generator is providing the work, the muscle. So we already have the temporary, so I don't understand why we would want to take and close off this street in between homes into where now we'll be looking at a white vinyl fence instead of the river. And I hope everyone got the email from Ms. Regelman that lives at 2432. It will affect her the most out of any other neighbor. But again, thank you, guys, and I hope we start to work on the permanent solution, which is lift station number three. I personally do not understand why we cannot do that. I have no fear of anything falling into the river, and I would stick my life on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Chris Mowbray. Please state your name and your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes. You can set it down there on the...
You can set it on the...
I gave you all my comments.
Okay. May I have one of your...
Sure.
You can use mine, Chris.
Oh, is that this?
Oh.
That's what you need, right?
It'll come up soon.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, City Administrator, and Council People. My name is Chris Mowbray, and I live at 2504 Riverside Drive, East Bradenton. I'm a retired civil engineer. Spent 38 years at Manatee County.
Sir, if you can speak up a little bit louder for the microphone.
Sure. I'm a retired civil engineer, spent 38 years at Manatee County Public Works, and charged with designing roads, sewers, stormwater, capital improvement projects. Because of my background, I think I'm uniquely qualified to help my community understand and navigate the issues regarding lift station 13, item 8B, on your agenda. On March 21st, city officials were kind enough to come to our community and meet to share their plans for the proposed temporary lift station fix of lift station 13, because it was determined that the lift station cannot survive another hurricane season after the trifecta of Debbie, Helene, and Milton. Page one shows my understanding of where the city is proposing to locate the temporary lift station 13, right in the middle of 2500 block of Riverside Drive East, which is only 20 feet away from the existing lift station for a cost of $500,000. During our meeting, we were told the temporary lift station would be five feet higher than the existing seawall height. Also, my understanding is that the public right-of-way connecting Crescent Court East and Riverside Drive East will be blocked by the highlighted six-foot-high tall fence for three to five years while the temporary lift station exists. Page two shows many reasons why this location is not a good idea, including regular flooding during sunny days. The Sebolds, who live in the affected neighborhood, have offered a vacant lot next to their home as an alternative location for the temporary lift station, which you show on page four. The alternative location has many benefits. Page five outlines an excerpt of the technical details that show the temporary lift station will work in the alternative location on the Sebold's vacant lot. This was fact-checked by subject matter experts from engineering firms specializing in utility plant lift station construction, has been sent to city engineer Tim Clayback. Page six has the important Manatee type data, and in between the lines, that represents when water enters into the road 22% of the time for half the year and about 30% of the time during the height of hurricane season. Page seven is a picture of the road during one of the events. This is a sunny day, I'm six foot four, and the weather's almost like sunny.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, we have Marcus Hyde. Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you. You have three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Marcus Hyde. I live at 2410 Riverside Drive East, just a few houses down from that gentleman right there. I've been listening to this generator run for eight years. I'm 100 yards away from it, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It gets very wearing for all of us, especially for Mrs. Regelman, who unfortunately cannot be here today because she's suffering from cancer. I'm trying to speak on her behalf also, as mine. This generator station and everything is a real eyesore. It's also a value problem. It decreases the values of all our homes. I think it's a wonderful idea that Mr. and Mrs. Sebold have offered to offer some of their land off that site for temporary use for over two years at no charge to the city. I think this could be a great savings to the city of putting in all of this work and all the fencing and everything, and then in two or three years have to remove it and repair the injury to the property. It'll also keep Riverside Drive and the traffic flowing around it open by putting it on Mr. and Mrs. Sebold's property. I just think it's a wonderful idea for the city to do this very thing. I think it's good for our neighborhood, it's good for the noise, the peace and quiet of the people that live there. I've lived there for 50 years. I love Bradenton. I love Manatee County. One of my previous gentlemen, Bill Evers, was a neighbor of mine for many years. I just respect every one of you, and I know how hard you all work. So please take this into consideration and move this lift station over to Mr. and Mrs. Sebold's property. It's out of the way, it's off the street, it won't block traffic, and it'll serve, I think, a real good purpose, and I think it'll be just as easy, if not easier, for the city to connect into the sewer lines from that location. That's my two cents, and I hope it helps.
Thank you, sir.
Have a great day, folks.
You, too. All right, I have no other public comment cards, so at this time, we'll close our citizen comment. Any council members, and I think on the lift station 13, we'll save that till we get to it, but is there anything else on citizen comment? I've got some, but I want to miss Councilwoman Moore.
I noted it to do Ward comments, but I'll just, just in case you were going to touch on it. I appreciate the Braden Castle people coming out to give public comment, and I also appreciate my neighborhood people coming out. Just a note of appreciation that you're active and participating and really expressing, you know, what's happening, boots-on-the-ground kind of thing. About Braden Castle as well, I just also wanted to throw out there the canal, so that we could follow up on the canal. I think that she spoke to water, and that was my note, was that I just want to remember to come back to that. I think that was it.
All right, thank you. All right, a couple of comments I have on permits. I saw that Mrs. Singer had given you her card, so she can help you with that. On the water quality testing, I get those reports, and Tiffany, our PIO, pulls those off for me every week, and it's kind of interesting to see where, you know, Braden River part of it is in the green, where it was a little bit in the yellow or red, but the Manatee River was in the green last week, and now it's a little bit in the red. So like I had said at our last meeting, some of that information, I think, is flowing and literally, because where are we at in the time of the year? Because I try to look at it, think why. I think part of that is when people fertilize, when people do things upriver that's, you know, not in the city, but it flows down. When we have rain, as we know that even our Sarasota Bay estuary is off the charts, we know that's the Tampa Bay estuary, but they're not getting a lot of worse results than we're getting, they're getting similar results, and we see more seagrass. So sometimes that, just by nature, will die and cause an issue. And then again, I would hope that all that are testing the river would test it to the river quality, not swimming quality, because there is difference with when you walk up to a sandy beach and you go in it compared to a river that has a lot of homes on it that things are flowing. So we really need to judge things, and again, I'd like the green, because that's even more holding us to a standard, but I think there's opportunity to keep keeping that information out there, that when there's good things, you talk about the good things, when there's things we can improve on. But it's all of us. It's the fertilization, it's the boats in the water, it's the oil off, if people do swim, it's the oil off of them, it's the animals, it's everything, but you've got to take it in a whole collaboration. So, you know, that's something that, for years, I've been studying now to make sure that we're doing the best we can without other stuff, so thank you for that. Talking about some different cases that are out there, and I think, Chief, did you have something you wanted to say real quick, on part of it?
I, it's, you know, I hear the same thing, week after week after week after week after year after year. I obviously will tell you that these have all been looked into. However, in the rare instance that we may have missed something, I have Detective T. Perry seated back there. As soon as Mr. Jones would like to go into the hall, she represents the Internal Affairs Unit. She is going to take another recorded statement from him, and we will pour over it and make sure there is something that we have not missed over the past decade, and be able to assure you all that we are doing everything we can do. So we're going to take that extra step, so that looks like it's happening right now.
All right, and again, I think that sometimes when you sit up here, meeting after meeting, and get bashed about things from individuals that have spent time in jail, that are by jury trials, have been contempt of court and spent time in jail, and as elected officials, we've got to take it more than we have to. Our employees don't have to take it as much, but I'm, as my wife says all the time, I signed up for this, and I'll take it. But when there is straight-out lies out there, I'm not going to take it anymore. And, you know, it's not about using the public forum, it's not about using the citizens' money, it's about protecting the integrity of a city and people that are out there running. So when cases have been investigated and closed, when there is no case, when there is no police report because there was no accident, there was no anything, we need people to realize you have every freedom of speech, but you don't have a right to lie. And I've got a report here that I would, you know, that I would like people to eventually see, and if somebody wants public records, ask for the public records. But when people put in the newspaper, just lie after lie after lie, they got to be held accountable, just like I expect people to hold me accountable if I lie. But in all of my years up here, as a councilman, as a volunteer for the city, as a businessman in this city, there's never been lies to the public. You may not always agree politically with somebody, but it's got to stop. And when people put out lies and medical examiners do investigations, and people do investigations and there is no murder, then we can't just keep going down that path. And I just feel that it's time for somebody to stand up. And in some of that, I wasn't even mayor, and the headline says, "Mayor Covers Up," and then has my name in it. It's got to stop. And, you know, I don't know what it takes to stop it, but when somebody doesn't even get public record, they don't even talk to the supposed victim, then stop. And, you know, we have sat up here and listened for years, and I've just had it with that, and whether, you know, I just want people to realize, judge the person for what you do. If you differ politically with any of us, then let's talk and work things out, but don't lie about something. I don't, Ms. Coker, did you have something? I thought you grabbed the card, but...
Well, I was more going to talk about water, but you kind of touched on it, so all right.
All right, so moving on, Madam Clerk.
Item six is the consent agenda, and staff is requesting approval of items A through I.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, by Councilwoman Coker.
Second.
By Vice Mayor Kramer.
Mayor, I've had the opportunity to brief all councilors on item, the totality of item six on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any further comment? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
Item 7A is the first public hearing for Resolution 2548 with the CRA.
Pam.
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry.
Mr. Mayor, Jeff Burton, Executive Director of the CRA. This is a resolution deeming a piece of...
Speak up a little bit, or kneel down closer to the microphone.
Kneel down.
Deeming a piece of property the CRA owns as a brownfield site, following state statute. This will follow up with a second hearing on the 25th of this month, I believe. We just asked that they move forward. Thank you.
All right. And the first public hearing, and the second public hearing will be set for?
April 23rd.
All right, anything else we need to do? Mr. Rudesell?
Need to open the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Do the whole public hearing for now. So Chair, we'll open the public hearing for Resolution 2548 from the Community Redevelopment Agency. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll pause the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
We don't, no. We don't make a motion.
Oh, with second. Move it to the 23rd. Get used to doing it, so. All right, so we'll have it on the 23rd of April, second reading and public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Item 8A is City Hall Minor Office Remodel.
Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, before we get to that, I just wanted to introduce someone real quick and say thank you to someone else. Pam Skelding's in the back of the room, and she came in, and she's been doing some great work for us, obviously, with our ship grants and CBDG and some of the other outreach programs we have, where we basically provide federal funds, state funds, to folks in the community. And Pam's at that point where she's going to be retiring soon. I think this week is her last week.
No.
Yep, 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 unfortunately. And with her is someone new that's coming in, Deidra Barfield, who is, really has a great background and has been well-received by everybody. They're very impressed with Deidra, and so, you know, it's sad to lose one person, but always it's nice to have someone behind them, and we're going to continue to get a second person over there, because really, it's a two-unit shop, is the best way to describe it. But I want to acknowledge Pam and also introduce Deidra to the council.
So why don't you come forward, now that we know you're retiring in a week, so you'll be gone before the next council meeting, so we obviously want to say a few words to you.
I would love to say a few words. It has been a great opportunity and privilege to work for the city of Bradenton. I've enjoyed my position, I've enjoyed working with the residents and being able to help them with home repairs to stay in that affordable housing. So it's just been a great experience, and thank you so much for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. And our new housing specialist, Deidra. Good morning, everyone. Thank you.
Good morning.
Deidra Barfield. Thank you. Yes.
Councilwoman Coachman?
Ms. Skelding, you know how I feel about you, and your hard work and what you brought to the department, because it was lacking. And it's bittersweet.
It is.
I, I'm happy for you. Retirement is probably the best thing in the world you can do right now, but just want to say I appreciate you. And if, tell me your name again.
Deidra Barfield.
If Ms. Barfield was selected by you, I know she's good to go.
Yes, she is.
Welcome.
She's learning quickly, it's a lot to learn, but she's getting up to speed, and I'm here another week, into next week, to help her with any questions, and I told her I am available, just a cell phone call away if she has any questions after I've left. So I think we're in good hands.
I appreciate you, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
And as you pass the torch, welcome to the city of Bradenton. And as you pass the torch, welcome to the city of Bradenton.
Thank you.
Ms. Barnaby?
Ms. Skelling, every time I've ever called, you've been there, you've had the answer. If you didn't have the answer, you said, "This is a new thing for me. Let me figure it out, and I'll get back with you." And you always do that. And as someone who sits up here, being able to get information promptly and get correct information to give our citizens, particularly when you're dealing with federal money.
Yeah.
It, it means so much. Your, your trustworthiness, your work ethic, your sense of humor. I appreciate you. I appreciate everything that you've done, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
And Ms. Barfield, there are big shoes to fill. However, I'm, my money's on you. I bet you're gonna be a wonderful asset for us. So, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby. Councilwoman Coker.
Yeah. As, as a realtor in my other life, um, the whole American dream, homeownership, it comes with a lot of challenges, and you've been there as a stopgap to help people. And I really appreciate all of the hard work and, and the heart that you put into the job. It wasn't just, you know...
It wasn't. I definitely care about the residents.
It was definitely a heart into it, and, and I wanna thank you on behalf of our community, and I hope you're not going too far, 'cause we've got some great volunteer boards that you will be, you could be a great resource for. But, uh, thank you and best wishes, and I can't, I'm looking forward to working with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just say one final thing, obviously echo what everyone has said, and, and I know, um, sometimes your job wasn't easy, because you were having to make decisions, you know, whether somebody got a new roof, or whether somebody got this, and if they qualified, and if they didn't. And, and of course, during the storm season last year, you know, with all this going on. And I think, um, you know, the CDBG money that has come in has been greatly used for our city, and there's gonna be some CDBGR money that we're gonna be getting through our county for some of the storm stuff, that I think that, you know, with your tutelage, it's gonna be a lot that has to be done, even though we're gonna be working with the county. Um, getting thirty-two point seven million, eleven thousand dollars will be good for our citizens to make our town better. So, we appreciate everything you've done, and we look forward to, to working with you, Ms. Barfield. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the kind words, and I'm gonna miss working with all of you. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Glad you brought that up at that moment. 'Cause I saw him leave the room, and you ran out.
Mayor, the other item, the council, the other item on the agenda is, uh, I wanted to give you a little bit of a heads-up on what's happening out in the City Hall foyer area, reception area, right by the CRA. Um, you might have seen some fairly minor construction. There's some plastic up and sheathing. Um, we're basically trying to office wall that in so that create another office. Um, we have a new permit manager coming in, um, and we're trying to basically make some additional space, and we're trying to do that economically. And so that project's like probably, we're thinking less than a couple of thousand dollars. We did it internally, and you probably see some of our folks from facilities doing the framing and drywall. Um, and I just, since it's your all's building, I wanted to make sure you knew what was going on. Stand for any questions on that.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coachman.
I don't have a question about that, but it came to mind after you and I spoke, um, for that briefing. Um, is it possible that we could consider making it a little safer to enter into the, um, um, council area? I mean, we already have two doors with the fob or the, the badge to get in, but there's still two individuals that are somewhat exposed. Is it possible to have?
Well, well, it's, it's certainly possible, but we'd get it, basically try to probably get a security, uh, person and utilize PD as well. Generally speaking, what you're gonna have to increase security in those types of areas, what I've seen, is kind of a Sally Port, a two-stage entry, basically, with his one door that has to be opened up.
Right, right, yeah.
And, uh, then that door has to be closed before the next one's opened up.
Yeah, but one of the things that we've...
But it's a significant investment, yeah.
Without going through the guard at the front.
True, true.
So, nobody, unless somebody just walks up there.
But everything, everything else on the second floor isn't exposed to the point that you could just walk in the door, even, you know, even. It was just a thought.
It's a good point.
It was just a thought.
I think to your point, everything else has access, entry only.
Look at that main door.
Like the door to coun, I don't wanna talk too much about security on...
That's okay. It was just a thought, and maybe it was...
Why don't we, why don't we get together, talk a little bit about it?
We'll talk about it.
You can figure something out.
Okay.
All right, perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I believe that, um, Mr. Perry's looking for a motion to approve the remodel for the space outside the CRA offices.
I don't think I really need a motion unless you prefer one. Um, it's within the budget for facilities and...
It's on the agenda, so that's why I'm doing it, yeah.
Well, yeah, it's just, it's just notice.
I promise, I don't stay up nights trying to come up with ways to make your life harder.
It's all good, yeah.
Now, Ms. Barnaby?
On the work that's already started.
Yeah, well, and, and that is underneath the limit, that he has authority to spend.
It just kind of, it was an update, more than anything, but if you want to, that's fine.
I mean, it's up to y'all. If you don't think we need it, if you're comfortable with it, I withdraw the motion. I was just following in the agenda.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Little old rule follower me.
Next, uh, next item eight B is the lift station temporary relocation, and we've heard a little bit of pub, pub, public comment from some neighbors. Um, as several of you know, you've been out there, um, it's, it's a fairly significant improvement, capital improvement, that we're trying to do to the city's wastewater utility. And Kim Clayback is here to talk about it a little bit. I, I, I wanna just give you a little bit of background. I think, you know, I have briefed each counselor on it, and, and obviously, Councilwoman Gonzalez Moore, uh, has helped us tremendously in trying to get the community there to improve the communications and explain a little bit about what we're trying to do, why we're trying to do it, and how we intend to do it. Um, the issue regarding that temporary lift station being on that pork chop is problematic. I think we all recognize that. And we are looking at some alternative locations that are very nearby, um, to place that temporary lift station. Really what we're doing is we're, lift station thirteen was originally built, and I think in the nineteen thirties, as basically a drain that went into the river. There probably weren't many homes on, on Riverside Boulevard back then. And as time developed, the system down there, for about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty, the number has varied, homes, it's a gravity system. It runs downhill towards the river and that lift station thirteen. Um, when you heard it was a former septic tank, at one point it was, but it was also reconstructed, and it's got a deep well. The system itself has, uh, the, the structural components of it is the concrete impoundment encasement is about sixteen inches thick. It's deteriorated down to four inches, and it's basically compromised. What engineering is concerned about is that it could fall in the river, and if it does, there's some fairly bad consequences as far as what we'd have to do to those homes that are on that system. And so, they've been working on this pro, project for a long time, and what they wanna do is basically shut down thirteen, take it off the river where it shouldn't be in today's modern days. There's lift stations down on River View Boulevard as well. Back in the old days, that's what you did. You ran your gravity systems for your sewer down to the river, and you put it in the river. Um, I guess when there was one or two, three people, they didn't worry too much about it, right?
[laughing]
And everything. But now with, you know, so many people, that's, it, it's a real problem. So, as an aside to that, Lance and I were in a meeting yesterday with Current and their financial solutions team, and the state of Florida is getting one point six billion dollars from EPA that'll go to FDEM and then come for awards. And there's three, there's four, three categories mainly, stormwater, sewer water, and potable water, and twenty million dollar caps on each particular category per applicant. And one of the biggest things they wanna do is start getting lift stations o, off the rivers and off the, off the waterways of the state of Florida, because it was legacy, and it's a real problem. Now, when you think about it being a problem, it's a problem from a lot of different multitudes, because when you get these types of rains we've had and storms for the last season, and, and pretty much every season in July, right? It's the wet season, and, and we get a lot of rain and precipitation, the highest of the annual, uh, rainfall, that what ends up happening is you get that I N I. So, that basically lift station is kinda underwater, and so are the manholes that surround it. Even if you go down to that area on a, on just a rainy day with a king tide type situation, Riverside Boulevard is, is probably...
Riverside Drive.
I'm sorry, Riverside, uh, Drive, excuse me, Drive. Riverside is, is a probably six, eight inches of water on the roadway, and it takes a while for it to clear out. So what do you think happens to our sewer system when that kind of water inundation happens, or a storm? It's underwater. It gets into your system, and basically, that's what is causing the, oh, part of the I N I, the inflow and infiltration. So you take a system that on a dry day is circulating six to seven million gallons a day, and all of a sudden, you're bringing in the river, and you're bringing in the storm, and you're going up to thirty million gallons a day. So, you, we better solve the problem. It's not just a problem for those hundred and seventy homes. It's a problem back at the plant. It's a problem at the outfalls that go from the plant. If we have to discharge because of those capacities, but it's also a problem to that local neighborhood. Um, the project before you is basically to do the better part of three things. The first thing is, there's all rear laterals in those homes I referred to in that area. I mean, they come up the back of the houses, and, uh, they have to be basically re, redone. And so, we were looking at a six million dollar project, which is sizable for a relocation, rebuild of a lift station. First thing we have to do is the laterals. In order to get the laterals, we have to get construction easements and things like that to access the property and, and, and agreements with the property owners to allow us to do that. We're, we'd be paying for it, the city.
But that, I'm gonna ask the question, and why do I, living in a different area of the city, have to pay for private laterals?
It's to the benefit...
'Cause I had that question come from residents.
It's a good question, from, from a public utility benefit, taxpayer standing type issue. I think it's to the benefit of the entirety of the system. Um, you're right that arguably, it's not your lateral if you live on the west side of the city or someplace else. And so, your rate is partially paying for that at some level, but I think it's beneficial into the entirety of the system, because you're eliminating some of this problem that's contributing to the, the water plant overcapacitation issue. So, there's different ways to look at that, indirect beneficial.
If I live in west Bradenton and I have a lateral problem, is the city gonna fix it for me?
It would depend. If it was, if it rose to this level, it would be a policy decision that would probably come through engineering to myself and to you all for approval about whether we should do that. And in this case, it's part of what we're doing. Um, but...
We have, no, but I think this is important.
It is important.
For everybody to understand, that we have approximately twenty thousand accounts, give or take a few.
Sixteen.
Sixteen thousand accounts, give or take a few. Um, so, a hundred and seventy out of sixteen thousand is, and, and I'm not arguing that it should or shouldn't be done. I'm just saying, I've already got this question from somebody that lives in Ward Two. Why are you not gonna pay for my lateral if you're gonna pay for somebody else's lateral?
I would like to speak to your question, but before we get to questions, can I just, I got a very little bit more, and then I want Kim to kinda take over.
I would like to speak to that, though, if I make my point.
Can we come back to it?
No, let her speak to it, because I think it's, it's gonna open up...
Yes, sir.
Because there's other people with the same situations that are gonna ask that question, and I wanna have the dialogue.
Sure.
About it, because we're all gonna have to explain that.
Yes, sir.
When it comes down to it. So, go ahead, Ms. Moore.
Um, well, I would, I would like to highlight this picture of Mr. Mowbreeze, if you all don't mind putting it on the emu and expanding what the, um, what the lift station looks like. Um, I wanna clarify what we're doing, and Ms. Clayback can correct me if there's any, if I'm getting any of the science wrong, but the matter before us is the question of whether to spend five hundred thousand dollars on a temporary lift station to take lift station thirteen, which is currently on the river and looks like this. If you could expand what it looks like, I don't know if we have the capability to do that, but I know Ms. Barnaby is familiar, and I know that Mayor is familiar, but I think that it would benefit everyone to know what this particular thing is actually looking like and sounding like and smelling like. Um, the issue of the private laterals is a small piece of something that's much bigger. Um, so again, the matter before us is whether to spend five hundred dollars on a temporary...
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand, yes, I'm sorry, excuse me, on a temporary lift station to remove what you're looking at, which is the lift station, but also a sub-pump generator, if I'm saying that correctly, um, that has been there for approximately eight years. Um, that is a separate project from a bigger project for which we have fifty percent matching grant funding, that is to expand lift station three, which is located approximately three blocks south of this, uh, lift, lift station thirteen, and then actually build an entire collection system. Currently, the pipes and the laterals coming out of the houses are going in what I would call some kind of chaotic spaghetti, uh, you know, wherever was the closest in the thirties to get the house connected to this thing on the river is what they did. So they're through yards. There's no rhyme or reason now to where the laterals are located. Um, the collection system has to be completely brand-new in the right-of-ways. Um, and then, they, we have to go into people's yards and dig out the old ones. For the new collection system to work, the laterals have to be replaced. And so to answer the question, why would we make an area suffer this for a hundred years? Eight in recent times, that is just unacceptable, in my opinion, um, with this current situation. Why would we do that and ask them to, you know, they pay taxes too, and...
It's because there, there's a multitude of different reasons. Um, when you say they suffered for a hundred years, nobody on this board or in this city that works for the city now built that system back then. Um, it was probably fairly common, again, to run sewerage to rivers. I don't think that makes a lot of sense these days, but...
But I'm speaking to the question of...
But it did.
Why we should make them pay for the pri, the, the question that has been raised by residents in Ward Two.
Specifically, why they should pay for that.
Why would the city pay for the private laterals when we have to rebuild an entire collection system?
Right.
A collection system that has been in need
Yep.
of replacement for...
It's a fair question. It's a question of policy that I think you all have to make. So, and, and it's, it's a good point you're making. Um, but I will tell you that in a lot of cases, there are assessments for infrastructure, special assessments that are levied by utilities.
We don't, we don't pay, we don't make sidewalk site specific.
No, we don't do sidewalks.
There are many services that we provide.
You're right. Not, but utilities is a rate, is a rate service, whether it's electrical utility or...
We're going down the path now.
I know, we are, we are going.
But my only point was, I've had that question come to me, now that this has come up, because Ward Four is old, Ward Two has some old, Ward Three has some old. We're talking about infrastructure in our downtown, that we have a lift station, what's that number over there?
Eight.
Eight, that is gonna have to be moved, that we're going to be, um, moving at, with the development process of paying for it. So I'm not saying that it's right or wrong. I agree. One of the things I'm gonna say right out of the box, when Kim showed me this, what, six or seven months ago, I told you you were nuts to put it on that pork chop, if you remember correctly. I said, "What other options are out there?" But then it took about, storms came and we had to delay it. So, and I'm not saying that you're nuts, obviously, but I just didn't think that was the right way. I think there's options other than on private property, because one of the things I heard today from one of the residents, that we were going to be given the, of the property. Now, there's also restrictions that I heard after that. So, I want everything to come out today that I would rather spend money on something that we can do temporarily, if we have to buy a piece of property, and then sell it later, at least we'll be able to recoup the property. Somebody giving us a lease and then charging money after so many months is not a give. And that's what I wanna make sure that we all know. Is that true or not?
The way it was put to me by counsel, who I think has spoken to that individual, and I had a brief conversation onsite with Counselor Barnaby, um, I think it was on Monday, was that there would be a two-year period where it would be free, and then there would be a very large lease payment, which would incentivize the city to complete the project within a time specified. I think the counselor referred to me, me as, what do you call that? A liquidated damage provision. But one of the problems with that particular proposal is basically, we don't control how long it could take. There could be three storms, there could be supply chain interruption and the like, and I don't think that there should be windfall opportunity because of force majeure type issues such as that or otherwise. Now, the, the site itself and the proposal is... Now, the, the site itself and the proposal is good in a lot of ways. Because it does take that particular temporary lift station, it's called a PAC. And we got bids for it, and we're looking at about four hundred thousand dollars, three- Half a million, right.
But we're gonna spend the money, no matter what we do temporarily.
Right. And, and one of the things is, is that if you look at that photograph that's down there right now, on that, that's a bypass pump. And it's, it's got a generator on it, basically. And it, it, it circulates the water back to where it can be evacuated out of there, at the lift station. And so, uh, it's not, you know, it's compromised. That is not an ideal situation. We heard the one in- individual talk about, it was run in twenty-four-seven, and you know, during storms it does. It's unsightly, it's loud, it's ineffective, it's compromised, it's, it, it, it's limited capacity, it's, it's not good at all. That picture actually looks, makes it look better than it really is. When I go by there, I go, oh my god, it looks like a jerry rig to me. And, and one of the things is, is that some of the neighbors said, well, you know, we've waited this long, why don't we just risk, risk it? I don't think the city should risk that particular thing collapsing into the river. Because the options to those neighbors could be individual septic systems, diminution of value.
I don't wanna waste five hundred thousand dollars, but I also don't wanna risk millions of dollars of fines in shutting down a neighborhood. Ms. Moore, and then we can get-
Yes, cause I wanna speak to the proposal about where to put it and purchasing versus leasing, and the notion of liquidated damages. Number one, that is all up for negotiation. So to the extent that there was an absorbent amount or windfall, I think that that's not set in stone. And that, that's, that's something that's movable and that we can deal with. But also to the-
Ms. Moore, I would hope you weren't negotiating on behalf of the city before we-
Of course not, absolutely not.
I just want that sense of people can hear.
Yes, yes, I was absolutely just listening to residents, yes. But, I just, I wanna, I, my comments are, this is a little out of order, but I think that it's an appropriate time, given, you know, maybe some concerns about residents having windfalls or whatnot, to speak to, in my opinion, there's, I have the list of contractual questions that probably will be more directed toward Mr. Russell. But let's put that for aside for a minute, there's an emotional component to this project. Even I will get emotional about it. That temporary thing, I, I would just like for all of you to imagine that you live across the street from this. And that the city tells you for eight years that this is temporary. Would you trust the city when they tell you that they're gonna take up a right-of-way? And put a temporary in it, and it's just gonna be temporary? But would you be able to say to yourself, yes, based on history, I will trust you, city of Bradenton? And you will follow through and it will be temporary? And that will not, uh, you know, be a problem for me for another eight years? I tell my kids, when they mess up, and they ask me to trust them again, I tell them, you can't ask me for it. You have to earn it, you have to build it. And it starts with listening to them right now. And not accusing them of mount, of, you know, and I'm not saying that you're doing that, but I'm saying, I just wanna be clear about the intent here.
Right, and I, and I agree with you a hundred percent, and you know I get as emotional as anybody.
Yeah, I feel very strongly about it.
You have more, more, uh, reason to be emotion, because what you've been through over the last six months and still aren't in your household. That, but the thing is, we have to take out the emotion up here and try to figure out what's gonna get it the quickest, what's gonna do it the best. And, we were not eight years ago, it's not us.
I, I appreciate that.
But, but let me, me, we have changed that culture. We, but if you don't do something now, then, and I'm gonna say it because I'm a broken record on it, the third bridge. We let somebody stop us because of stuff. And I say we, it wasn't us, it was the politicians of thirty years ago. And we don't have a third bridge now, and it's traffic. This, I don't want this to be another situation where we argue, 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 till it basically kills it, till we have a problem. And I'm not saying we're doing that.
Right, no, I-
We're dialoguing, which, that's why I'm allowing it, because I think there's a solution here, I don't know what it is yet.
I have some suggestions.
But, but that's what we'll get to at the point. But we also, you have to take out the emotional part of it to get to the good of the whole. And that's, as a councilperson, yes, I fought for Ward Two. But I also fought for the whole city. But there was times I had to say, okay, what is gonna get this done the quickest, the cheapest? And I say cheap, not cheap from job, but the least expensive from a citizen's standpoint to save money, because that's all we look at. So we are trying to get this done. You're darn right, I'd be mad if I lived right there. But I also wanna get it done, and this is a different board.
Well, yes, and if I could speak to that, I get that it's a different board. But that doesn't really matter to them. And so, and I, they don't wanna hear that, honestly, that's what I'm hearing, they don't wanna hear that kinda thing. They wanna hear that there is going to be a shovel in the ground for Lift Station Three, that's what they wanna hear. And I don't blame them, that's what I wanna hear. And also, they wanna hear about a timeline, even if it's gonna change. Because when we, you know, it's, of course, I, you know, I understand. And I have the privilege, and I said this yesterday in my meeting with Mr. Perry, I have the privilege of asking for meetings and popping into people's offices, but they don't. And, and I wanna be able to reassure them with that information. And I, and I would like to know that, while I appreciate very much that we're, we're gonna dig up some roads and we're gonna dip, dig up yards, and we might find something that now the project takes six years instead of three to five. I hope this doesn't happen, but I, I appreciate that it's in the realm of possibility, but we need to communicate that. So, in my opinion, the way that you start building this trust is, number one, you take seriously the alternatives that have been presented to us for location. And number two, we begin with haste to schedule the community meetings that we need to do. I think we need more communication. I don't wanna be perceived as withholding information, because it could theoretically change. That doesn't foster that trust, that doesn't build that trust, that we frankly, on behalf of this neighborhood, have got to earn back. We may not have caused the problem, but it is now incumbent upon us to begin the hard work of listening to a history, an area that has historically been forced to deal with, something that none of us would wanna deal with in our neighborhoods. And now we are the ones that have got to be responsive to it, in my opinion.
No, I, I think that's my opinion, it's everybody's opinion up here. And that's why I want the dialogue, I want that opportunity. And that's my personality, is face it and fix it, that's why we came up with it. And not face it and fix it in ten years, it's face it and fix it now. These two can say, every meeting we have, if we don't get funding this year, how are we still doing those projects with the money? I ask them that. I don't care if we get the eight million dollars this year from the state, we're still doing those projects, that's the eight million dollars. Where's that money coming from? Because we have the SRF loan, we have the other money coming in. So, I'm totally agreeing with you, but we also have to make some decisions to get the stuff started. I'm gonna let Councilwoman Coachman, and then we'll, and then Mr. Perry, I'm sorry, but I think this is good dialogue up here.
I do too, I do too.
I want everybody to hear it, because we can't talk anywhere else, we can't talk with the public as much. And, and the public knows out there, especially a couple of them, you got my cell number. And I do answer the phone even though your name pops up. Councilwoman Coachman.
Thank you. I just want to kinda clear the air in terms of referring to this as emotions or emotional. Because, and now, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try not to get emotional myself. When you say something is emotional, you almost kinda, it's almost like being dismissive. What you're seeing is a result of historical, now this is eight or nine years. I represent people in a ward where historically, it has become a culture to be put kinda to the back burner, okay? This council, my first term and as we're going now, we are trying to resolve that, that feeling of what the community has about us. And unfortunately, though we weren't there thirty years ago or whatever, we have to accept the responsibility of it. And we need to fix it, and we need to be fair about it, no matter what part of the city it's in. Old part, new part. And, I guess what, what, I just don't want it to continue being dismissive because you, we're emotional. Yes, we are, but it's because of a culture that has been established. And we're trying so hard to reverse it. And, and let's just really say that, and let's really do that, and let's tell people that we are listening. We just can't be up here saying, oh, well, it wasn't our fault, but, but we're, no. We, we, we really need to tackle this, and, and, and-
Thank you, Ms. Coachman, and I'm gonna, to dialogue with you a little bit there. Because, one of the things that, that I think is so important is actions. And I think you've seen the actions from the leadership here, through the, the polit- political or politicians that we are. The actions are doing it. Some things, we all talk about it, all of us talk about it, how slow things are. You know, in the real business world, you might wanna do it. But also, to our citizens. And we need them to understand that just because you've asked it, it can't happen tomorrow. We've got to get that process. And I think this is a perfect dialogue. And, you know, it's easy for some people, and we're even seeing it in other areas of our county, that they are dismissive. They don't go to meetings, they don't show up to things. There's not a one of us that won't show up to anything, especially me. And I don't care if it's something I agree with, or know I'm gonna get the pitchforks or not, but we've got to get that going. We've gotta get processes, we've gotta do things that are gonna make things happen. Sometimes, yeah, if somebody has some things, we know, there was a piece of property we wanted to buy, but because it was down the path too far, we couldn't buy it that was gonna help our wastewater system. So, if you go too far down a path and then stop it, then it stops the project. And that's one of the things that, that I'm trying to keep moving. I've got Councilwoman Coker, and then Councilwoman Barnaby. And then Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, I just feel like it's a little bit counterproductive to si- to be up here and to say, we can't be trusted. And that, to me, I, I really don't think that's the way to go. And as far as, and I don't think it's productive to pound the, the, the counter and scream and cry and all that. I think we're all professionals, we all love our city, we all wanna make it better. I don't think there's one person up here that's, we might have a differing way. And, I understand, but to sit here and say we can't be trusted, I, I really find that counterproductive. And so I hope we can not do that anymore, because I think everyone is committed to finding a solution. And I personally want to rely on the experts. Because it's a difficult situation, what's in the past is the past. And I think the more we can, cannot, like we've said, we are all committed to this, we all love our community, we all want it to thrive. We all wanna protect people's property values, I weigh all of that in all of this. So, I, I just would, with regard to some of the comments that have been made, that, I wanna be, um, clear on that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this historic neighborhood has had issues over the years. And it, it doesn't help that we're seeing things that used to be considered one-hundred-year storms. We had basically three of them in three months, basically. It doesn't help that something that used to be kind of rare, like a king tide, is happening all the time. And it's happening up and down the river, it's happening on Riverside Drive, it's happening at Riverview Boulevard. We have to, we, we have to represent all fifty-seven thousand residents up here. And we have to be cognizant of that. I, I think everyone up here wants to see this done sooner, rather than later. I hope everybody up here recognizes how complicated this is going to be. One of the questions I have is that, when we start going out and, and trying to get what authorization we need from the residents, that is a time variable that, that we can't say. Because we're going to have to, have to be meeting with a hundred and, a hundred and eighty households. And, I recognize that I'm probably gonna get grief from my ward as to why are we paying to do improvements on private property with the laterals? But I also recognize the bigger issue that we have with the infiltration into our system that's causing us massive issues. And who's to say that we might not get a grant to be able to do more laterals in more neighborhoods? I don't know that. But, what do we estimate the time's going to be to try to get those one-hundred-and-eighty households to come on board with what we're doing?
That specific task order, probably, I'm taking a guess, but, but probably four to six months, best case.
That would be best case. The timeframe for the project is the, the timeframe for the project, first we have to get the Lift Station Three design completed. We've done a preliminary engineering report, we have all the parts and pieces sized. We have to do the pipes and the ground piece now. Once that's done, we'll put that out to bid, and we're gonna build Lift Station Three. While we're going through this process with the design and construction of Lift Station Three, we're also going to be designing the collection system in tandem. It's a parallel effort, it's not a one after the other kind of thing. And with that, while we're designing the system, we have to start preparing all the documents for the, the right to enter, the right to change their systems. You have to have plumbing permits on private property, and you have a utility contractor in the, in the right-of-way space. So we have to start coordinating different, a different trade to work on private property. And how, we have to work with the building department on how are we gonna get those plumbing permits issued and recorded? So, all of that's gonna be happening in the first one to three years, as we are designing the collection system and getting all our ducks in a row. And, the three-to-five-year timeframe, I'm hoping we can start sooner than three years, but three years is probably the right timeframe that we'll have our ducks in a row to start building the collection system. Lift Station Three's already built, it's gonna be in service, working on Brayden Castle, actually, cause it services Brayden Castle. And, as we work through the system, the new collection system that, right now, as, as Mr. Perry had said, it all flows to the river currently, because that was the standard at the time it was built. We've got to reverse the flow, so we've got to have it all sloped back, so it can come down Second Avenue. So there's, there's a change in grade underground for the piping system. But that lift station will be built and in service before we have the collection system complete. And, the two-year timeframe for the private property that was discussed is great, but two years isn't enough time for us to get the collection system built and in service. And not have all of the ducks, and the i's dotted, and the t's crossed, and our ducks in a row. Because it is a huge public outreach effort. We've got to talk to those homeowners, not just once, not just twice, but probably five or six times as part of our process. It's not a, it's not a one-off. It's not like we're building in the road and we're gonna pave it and go back. We've got to, again, redirect their laterals, we've gotta come back and abandon in their backyards. What is that gonna look like? We've gotta explain all of that to them as well. So it's, it is a process we've never undergone before in the city, not anywhere. But we have to do it. And in terms of rear, these are all in rear easements, these pipes and these laterals we're talking about. It was all built on private property. And the way that they built the easements, where the property line is, there's a five-foot easement on one side, and a five-foot easement on the other side for utilities. That gives our crews a whopping ten feet to work in to maintain those pipes. But there's fences there, there's trees, there's sheds, there's pools, there's patios. We found a manhole under, in somebody's living room this week. So, uh-huh, that was in Ward One, sorry, Mrs. Coker. But, there are all of those things that have happened over time. And, we are wanting to address them and be upfront with everybody, give you realistic timeframes. I'd love to say, magically wiggle my nose, and it's all gonna be done in a year and a half. That's not gonna happen. But, we want to do the project right, we are concerned- We are concerned about the property values there. Moving the system into the roadway is an increased property value as opposed to having a sanitary system in your backyard.
So Kim, I think one of the biggest concerns that I've heard and gone through is the, if we're saying one to three years to do this and then three to five years to do this, are we working simultaneously so we can, you know, it's not that we're saying we're going to do one thing and then do the other. Everything's going together and...
Yep, we're starting here.
Right.
The pathway for lift station three is a shorter path. The pathway for the collection system is a longer path. They're going to be starting at the same time, but one will get done quicker just because of the work.
But if we can get the four to six months done now, obviously, some ownership will change and things will go, but now we have that permission for those, and it may sit for six months, but at least it's there.
Right.
Then the other would happen. That's what I think, that's where people don't trust government. I don't trust government for that. But, you know, until we see it, and that's what we want to do, that's what I think we're hearing, and that's why we're wanting to do it. Let me get to Vice Mayor Kramer. And then, oh, you still had it?
I still have it.
I thought you had stopped.
No, 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 no.
Oh.
Okay, so we have to have all of these laterals dug and done. Is everybody going to try to find a plumber to do it? Are we going to look at doing, setting up a proposal where there may be one or two approved people that say they can come in and get it done and get it done the way we need it done? I mean, how, I see this as being fraught with peril, and that's why I'm asking.
It is a difficult project, and we will have more than one plumber that will be working on private property as part of this. Whether it's two or three, that I can't answer yet. That's in the details of what it's going to look like when we get out there. That's six, if we did it for three, that's 60 laterals for each that are running the length of the property to tie into the main line in the road. So we are going to be looking at that, and that will be part of, when it goes out to bid, how do we include that part in our bid? And that's going to require some language from council as well for working on private property and the communication with the residents. It's not just going to be us. It's going to be the contractors and the plumbers that are also going to have to communicate. It is our construction inspector that's out there. It is a daily ritual for those people to talk with the residents that are out there where we're doing construction. They don't do anything in a bubble. They're out there anyway. This has got to be an advanced effort.
Okay.
Maybe with this explanation, we understand why that pump was there eight years.
No, unacceptable. No.
But it's a complex, very complex.
Agreed, but no.
Let me have Vice Mayor Kramer.
Well, so a lot of what your presentation just now, really, Kim's compact presentation, answered a lot of the questions I had. But the one that I think we all have is still, why would that have still remained there? Like, that just isn't a good eight-year solution, be it temporary or not. Like, the fear everybody has going forward is that whatever is going to be put there is just going to be the same thing. I think I speak pretty generally for everybody on that. But we are looking to move forward. And I think that with what the professionals have put forward, this is a good plan. I think there may be some more discussion to be had about locations, but I think the idea of getting everything done has to start sometime, and if we're ready to start that now, start it, work on it, don't hurry, but don't rush, you know? We need improvement. We just don't want to rush through something. And I think that's what everybody's afraid of.
We'd looked at several options, so that all of you know. We looked at building it, rebuilding it in place. And based on current building code and where our electronics and our fuel has to be in a storm, that has to be 18 inches above where the water's going to rise to. So you're putting a generator up over my head and then building up from there because that's where it has to go. And the...
So can you give me a foot estimate? I mean, are you talking one story, two stories, three stories? What are you talking about?
So when we're building on the river, FDEP looks at sea level rise. So they're looking at where sea level rises, and then they're also looking at, because it's on the water, you can't look at 100-year floodplain, but you have to build up above that. Building code requires that anything electronic is 18 inches above the floodwaters. And where the floodwaters may be eight feet, we know that in what happened last year, that that's not good enough. It's not good enough for all of those people to stay in their house because if we can't, if it goes out, if the system goes out and we lose electricity, we have to have a generator to continue to service those houses because it's going to back up. It's going to, you can't evacuate the lift station. So anybody who's staying in place, they can't flush, they can't shower, they can't do anything except recirculate into the river. Or my estimation is just above my head. So at least five feet is where the bottom of the fuel cell's going to go. And then a generator generally sits on top of a fuel cell. We could put them side by side, but again, you're building a platform up here. We just redid the one, or not just, but we redid the one at Manatee Hospital, and that platform is right here on the bottom of the platform. And it is further away from the seawall than lift station 13 is. And that's to get the electronics and the backup system out of the floodplain.
Kim, what do we have on 20th Street and Riverview Boulevard? The pump, lift station?
Riverview, that's lift station six.
Right.
And that is actually behind the fence. It's difficult to see, but it was built up. It's also not the best location. It's still in a floodplain. But in terms of criticality of getting stations out of the floodplain, lift station 13 was number one. Lift station eight, which is downtown, is number two. Lift station six is in the next three.
But you don't see the one on 20th Street, and it seems like, is it in a building or is it...
No, it's behind a brownish color PVC fence.
Right, but you don't notice it unless, and I don't know, the only reason I'm asking is because is there ways you can do other things that we can get done quicker if we purchased a piece of property close to that lift station?
Yes. The long-term vision, rebuilding that lift station right where it is, was going to create an eyesore. Putting it in the pork chop at the intersection of Riverside and Crescent Court was simply the conceptual idea to start the process rolling. Is it tied specifically to the pork chop? No. Moving it to other locations? Absolutely. But to rebuild that lift station in its entirety, even if it was off the pork chop in a permanent location there, is going to be about $2.5 to $3 million. And then nothing gets remediated at anybody's backyard. And you're still, you still have your old laterals, and you still have all of the clay pipe that's in the rear easement.
So the I and I and all, that's not fixed, but we can't fix 16,000 laterals in the city if we had to. And maybe there's not that many, obviously, but there's going to be some in other areas. And others are going to start coming, "Well, when are you doing mine?" And that's another thing that we bring up at other times. But again, I know, and Mr. Perry, I thought this was the best dialogue because it gets some of the stuff out.
I just would like to...
If you can, Ms. Moore, you go ahead, and then let's let him finish, then we can even dialogue a lot more.
Okay.
We got, I don't have to be anywhere till six, so we're good.
I think that, I think it's important, I think it's important to, I also have some contractual questions, like I said earlier, but I want to address what residents of other wards are telling their representatives because I do care about what the other wards think, and I want to, I guess, alleviate the concerns that they might be having. To the question about, I appreciate both of what you two said because I think that you, I think that you reiterated something that I was trying to come across, which is that whether we like it or not, or whether we think it's counterproductive, there is an element of trust. There just is. And there's no point, in my opinion, in acknowledging or not acknowledging the history that these residents have experienced. It's an experience. It's just, it is what it is for them, just the same way it is what it is in someone who's lived for 40 years in Councilwoman Coachman's ward or 50 years in Councilwoman Barnaby's ward. And again, it's not that, I think we should come away from taking offense to that, you know? I've only been counsel for not even three years yet, but I sit and listen when they're angry, you know? That's part of the job. That's part of the collective, in my opinion. But to alleviate the concerns about who's paying for what and what they would want to have happen, I would ask the Ward Two person who was concerned about the payment of the private laterals, would you want to continue, if you lived there, would you be okay with that? Would you be okay with hiring your own plumber and paying for your lateral and the pipe that goes to the manhole if you had lived in a collection system that operated like this, you know, for as long as you could remember? And also, I will say that I think that we all are very aware that every resident of the city, every resident of the county, I would say even residents of the region, care about the health of our waterway. And this whole soggy mess contributes, when we hear, read the articles and get the backlash, this directly contributes to those problems. We don't fix this, we haven't, we can't check that box. We haven't fixed, we haven't faced it and fixed it yet. And so I would say, you're going to have to make a choice. But those kind of comments, I will just say very pointedly, don't reassure people that have this need. When they hear things like, "Why should I pay for your stuff?" I mean, it's insulting.
But it's...
We pay taxes, too.
Absolutely understood. However, it's a valid question, just like I have, you know, all of us take guff up here. We get people angry on the phone at us. We get people angry at us in person. And that's part of the job. It's also part of the job to be able to have these discussions and show why this is going to benefit the overall system. Just because someone asks a question doesn't mean they're taking that stand.
I genuinely hope not.
So if I may...
I just want to say one other thing. And the person that asked me in Ward Two lives in an area right now that we are getting ready to basically put on their tax bill for how long to fix a water system that they think the city should fix. You know what I'm talking about, and they're going to get, what, for 20 years, four, 500 bucks on their tax bill to fix a system?
Yes.
So that's where you've got to understand. It's, I'm with you. This is going. But they're going to ask those questions, and they're going to come up and ask then you to do it. Why we can trust more now, and then again, it's going to take a trust, that we have different people in the seats. We have different people in the seats here. We have different people in the seats out there, that is our staff. And that could be some of the reason why we have different people in the seats. So yes, and that's where, again, we've got to keep pushing forward, and no matter what direction we pick, where this could be, it's got to be quick. And that's the thing that I want to push because I don't want to say, okay, well, if we do this, now it's going to slow it six more months. If we do that, it's going to, you know, do that. It's just, it's about it. And Kim probably hears the most from all of us about, you know, what's wrong and why can't we fix it? You know, and I'm sorry for that, but that's more than, that's what it is, and you take it, and that's it. So, yeah, Ms. Coachman had one more thing, and then we can go on forever if we have to...
Yeah, but I'm sorry to belabor this, but I have, throughout my years up here, heard citizens come up, and they're angry at the city for not resolving something in a matter of a couple of weeks or what have you. And they'll refer, they'll say things like, "You're treating me like a second-class citizen." And that stuck with me when I heard that. And I heard that from someone that was worried about something that hadn't been fixed in a couple of weeks or days or what have you. And it made me think that in this city, we have people who feel they're classes of citizens. And in a way, if you think back, it kind of looked like that in terms of areas that were underserved. And unfortunately, now Ward Four is feeling this. But I guess it's a sad state of affairs that we have some people saying, "Well, why should I pay for theirs?" No, it's a city. It's a city thing. And this is a corrective action to be act, you know, to just really put it in simple terms. It's a corrective action. So if another part of the city is not receiving the same service that another part of the city that is so far from being equal to what they have, unfortunately, we're just going to have to continue to communicate that, you know, because it's a city. We're in it together. And if we need to make a corrective action of something that's been going, that was established years ago, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be the expense of the citizen. It should be the city. But anyway.
Ms. Coker and then Ms. Moore.
Well, just my only comment would be that I've been involved with several of the older properties in the other areas, and they have had to replace their laterals, and a lot of people have had to do it, and it was always at their own cost. So I can appreciate that some things, I mean, why would one person be responsible for their own and one person not? And we could certainly help them with, you know, with assessments, and you can have, you know, you can help finance that for them at a low interest or have it be extended out years because I understand not everybody has the ability to do it. But there are plenty of people that have had to deal with the age system on their own. And I don't have a problem with looking for grants, and I don't even have a problem with helping, but to get this us and them, to me, isn't, you know...
One of the things, I've been, I'm sorry, for 11 years that I've been here, one of the things that we are very cognizant of in Public Works and Engineering in particular is that we service each ward financially equitable. So where we may be doing work in Ward Four for this particular lift station, we also are working on Riverview Boulevard, which is a $1 million stormwater project. And we also did more water main replacements in Ward Three than anywhere else in the city because that was the specific need of that ward. Every ward is very unique in what its needs are, and looking across the spectrum of all the parts and pieces that Public Works services and does capital projects on is a more equitable look at what we do. Ward Four has more lift stations than any other ward. There's more than 20 in Ward Four. There's three in Ward Three. So if you look at just lift stations, Ward Four's always going to get more lift station money than Ward Three. But Ward Three's going to get more water main money than Ward One because those are all PVC systems generally. So it's looking across the spectrum of all services and what the ward needs are as well. It's not, everybody is paying for everything.
Yes.
But it's improvements across the city. And we do try to keep it equitable because that's important for all of you that sit up there and approve the budget every year for us. So we try to keep it equitable, and it may not be the same in one year, but if you're looking at a five-year or a 10-year rolling history, it becomes equitable.
But you also have to think that, what, everything you just said, I believe, is on public property, not private property.
Generally, it is on public property.
Right, so that is the concern. And again, I hear it, I get it more from others, but that's where we've got to be able to explain it in the right way, in the good way, which I think this is easy to explain from the long-term effects of things. And what you just said about, I didn't even think about that, 20 different lift stations. And again, as Councilwoman Barnaby said in the past, most of the properties that we're having problems with now are filled-in land. There was submerged land at times, and that's because it was the most valuable land at the time when people owned the property and that. So that's the thing that we have to be able to really sell to the whole city. And what is going to make our system better so we're not polluting the river, so we're not doing things that none of us caused, but we're going to fix. Councilwoman... Councilwoman Moore, and then let's, can we let Mr. Perry finish, and then we can dialogue, like I said, till six o'clock? I don't have a meeting at two o'clock, so I don't know what you guys are talking about.
I'll talk to the chair.
I am, I just, again, I just wanna, I wanna highlight that what we're here talking about in this immediate day is the temporary lift station that is separate than the construction of Three, the demolition of Thirteen, the building of the collection system, and then ultimately the connection via private laterals. I, I would just say that, you know, we're, we're talking about being in, in it altogether, but when I hear, "Why should I pay for your thing?", it's ignoring that, that my thing is part of a larger situation that is citywide. So I just, I wanna just really make sure that I'm clear about that. Nobody is asking for any kind of handout or whatnot like that. And then I also just wanna reiterate that I, I have identified solutions to some of the things that we have been discussing. And it is keeping in mind that the construction of Three, which is really the beginning of the, that's really the beginning of the project. The temporary is just a result of us not doing something with Thirteen for eight years, to be clear. So they're two separate things. What we could do is reassure people via, hey, we are at fifty percent constru-, you know, whatever it is at this moment in time regarding the separate project of the construction of Three, which kicks off everything else that has to happen, so that we alleviate the concern that the temporary becomes another, not temporary. I think we also need to commit to, and this is a contractual question because I have questions for Mr. Rudisil about if it ultimately was in the right of way. Is that a taking? Then you've got two property people to deal with, two property owners. Can we really not tie it to the location in this specific contract? Because it did seem to refer to some conceptual plans and whatnot. So I have those questions about that. But that said, I do wanna commit to listening to residents when they have the most intimate knowledge as to what makes sense for preserving value. Quality of life, just where is it located? What is it doing? It's, it's eleven feet in the air, and it's a generator, you know? I mean, like, where are we putting that that makes sense for the people that literally have to be a neighbor to it? And then I also would suggest scheduling the community meetings and not shying away from offering definitive information about timelines, about progress, because we have concerns that something might change and it might be delayed. I think if we're just communicating the entire time, then there's no need to hedge our bets about how long it's gonna take and, and only offer, you know, a little bit of a more, less-than-robust project updates to the community. I am getting project updates, I believe, very well from Ms. Clayback, but we need to push that out to everyone else.
Mr. Perry.
I think it was a good conversation, and I think that there's legitimacy to the trust issue in the community. I don't need to go into the explanations of, you know, Kim can tell you about sewer pipes that were collapsed and instead of repairing them with PVC, because the city didn't have the money, they would take a metal street sign and encase it in concrete, wrap it around the pipe. I guess you do it, you can, at the time type of thing and everything, but we are where we are. This is probably one of the largest undertakings as far as the utility work that's being done. That, I never heard of anything larger in the histories, in the city's history. I'm sure building the plant, you know, things like that were larger, but it's pretty complicated. And, and it's not without, without some, some challenges, huge challenges. But the point that I think you made was a really good point about the communications. If you have a trust issue, you don't usually earn that trust back overnight, no matter how that trust, what that trust issue is related to. But over time, you can. And I think over time, you have to communicate better. And, and that's probably one of the shortcomings here, you know, historically. And, and, and could be important to this project. It will be important to this project. But right now, what's before the court? The, the council, so to speak, is this issue about the temporary lift station. And from, Kim needs to say this, but I've asked her the question several times, that the proposal before you does not fix it to one location on the portchuck. We are going to look some, some alternatives, including Ms. Seabolt's property, as well as potential other alternatives there that I won't get into. And, but ultimately, we could go on and on, and every day we go on and on, and every month we go on and on, a solution doesn't arise. And that's the paralysis I've seen
Yeah.
happen in my thirty-five-plus years in government that, that kills me more than anything else. There's, sometimes there's just no easy road to go. And so for whatever reason, there's more questions than there are answers, and no one leaves the port. Well, if you don't leave the port, you'll never get to the destination. It's tough, and it's a tough road.
And I think that's why the eight years is where we're at. Because there was never a willingness to step up and say, "Let's get it done."
I think that's the point I was trying to...
There is now. Now, Ms. Barnaby.
Well, I don't think anybody up here is comfortable with just leaving this as it is, and we hope it doesn't fall in the river. I don't think anybody up here wants that. I do think everybody up here wants to see this project done and have it done correctly.
Agreed. We, we are invested.
So...
We as Public Works...
I want to just comment on that real quickly, is that the one thing I will say about this council and this administration, and frankly, is that we are getting a lot more funding than we have ever accessed in the past. And we're also trying to expand our bandwidth for people that can do these projects. And we have good people, but we have to continue to get good people because these are complicated projects. And we're not the Florida Department of Transportation that has endless resources around the state or the county and the like. And we're a local government. But we gotta have the, the horses to get this done. And, and so we realize that, Mr. Williams realizes, everybody in this room realizes, legal assistance that was required to do these things and everything. We've gotten a lot better. Our game speed has gotten better. I think we can do the project. I think we can get the project done in a reasonable period of time. It's tough to say exactly, you know, whether that's gonna be five years or, or, or six years or whatever it is, but that comes down to the communications too. And I think as we move forward, very shortly, we will be able to come, come up with a more definitive, specific timeline. County does their road projects a lot of times, and we see what goes on on the east side of the county. It takes years to build these bridges and other major road projects they have, and they have the county Big Five. And they put it on their website, and they blast it out on social media, and they go to neighborhood meetings. They do a pretty good job of it, really. There's always gonna be somebody, because I didn't know about that, right? But, but you can only do so much. I think we do have to get to that level of communications and keep this neighborhood and all neighborhoods and communities in the city up to speed with that stuff. And that's been something the mayor has, and all of you have made an investment in our communications piece. I think we're doing better at that. But again, legislation before us is about this particular temporary station.
Mr. Perry, I want you to repeat it. This, this that's before us is not, at this time, site-specific. Is that what I heard you say? That we are, we are still looking at...
Other alternatives.
Other alternatives, but we've got to get this ball rolling.
We do have to get the ball rolling. It takes time to procure all of this. And while the company that's doing it, you just approved a water main project for South of Manatee High School, they will be here in the city. As soon as those materials arrive, they are ready to go and, and start building that lift station. So we, it's a, we're purchasing a package lift station as a temporary station. It's not something we would build permanently. They will install it, and with the understanding, they're installing it to our specs and to, to the design that we have, the elevations we need. But this is, your approval today allows us to start the motion, start the progress, getting it in motion to, to procure the materials. And if need be, and I'm sorry, we'll, if we have to come back at every meeting to give you that update publicly, then that's what we'll have to do, I think, for this whole project. All of you are invested in it.
And if we have to have special meetings, we will.
Yes, absolutely. And we'll have public meetings. And I know you all can't attend all the public meetings, but we will have those as well.
So, yeah, one question...
And we'll have a communication plan set in place.
And I'll get to Ms. Moore, but one question I, when you were talking there, Kim, you mentioned about if we approve today, then you have to order something. Whatever you have to order, how long is it? Say we have the site, it's picked, it's all, everybody's happy or whatever, at least everybody leaves with a little bit of a frown or a smile, that that's where it's gonna be. When is the, that thing gonna be in the ground and ready to flip the switch?
The materials will be here in eight to twelve weeks. And then we have to connect all the piping that is associated to bring it to the lift station. So it's the installation of the lift station, as well as the gravity sewer that comes into the lift station and the force main, which is how you send it back out.
So when would the, when would the flip, the switch be flipped for that?
So it's a four-to-six-week installation time. So short term would be, if everything was perfect, twelve weeks.
Three months.
Yes. If we have a little bit of a delay, it could be sixteen weeks. So...
All right. So, and that will get, there would be no picture that we're looking at now on the river? Would we tear all that out, and that would be cleaned up at that point, or would we leave that for now?
No. Once this is completed, we can put out a contract through purchasing for the demolition of existing lift station thirteen, and that would be gone because it's no longer useful.
So when do you need to know, we approved this today to get stuff started ordered. When do you need to know, when would be the date that you said, okay, we have to have a final decision on where it's gonna be?
That would be, I believe there's another meeting this month, and is there two in May? Then by the second meeting in May would be...
We'll have a meeting every day if we have to. Madam Clerk will take care of that. If we need to have a meeting, we're not gonna wait two weeks if we have to do something.
If we have the materials ordered, we have that time period for, during delivery to make sure that it gets here. I would prefer shorter rather than longer, so we can work all the details of pipe connection into the plan instead of during that, during, doing that during their installation.
What I've found is, in government, and it's, we've had those meetings, Mr. Perry knows it, where we get everybody in the room, and whether it's the subcontractor, whether it's a management company, whether it's somebody else, that everybody else is doing this, fire marshal, all this, we get everybody in the room, and the lowest person in the room from the supervision standpoint knows where to fix the problem. If we have to do that every day, I want to do that. And again, a lot of stuff may be legal, so that's gonna come down to, you know, it's, well, it's gonna take a week to get that. No, we need it today if we find whatever alternative and then bring back to the council. So that's the importance of it, and that's my promise, and I know everybody else would have that same promise. It's not a matter of, well, we got a meeting in two weeks, we got time. No. Mr. Attorney, Mr. Fire Marshal, whoever else is gonna have to be involved in that, let's get that done. And I think that, that's, you know, where the trust issue is. But we gonna, we're gonna do what we're gonna say, you know, outside of our control. But also, the citizens have to have that same trust. You know, and it can't be a day-to-day, well, I don't trust you today, and I trust you tomorrow, and I don't trust you the next day. We know what we know. We gotta do what we do. And then, you know, and again, Mrs. Moore brings up a perfect thing with your kids. But you still love them, and you're gonna give them that opportunity to bring that trust back. And so far, I don't think that they can look up here and say, "We don't trust you. We don't trust the picture. Now how do we fix that?" And Ms. Moore?
Yes, thank you. So to alleviate any confusion or concerns, the contract before us today, like, can you just walk me through the process of we're approving this at this level of expenditure, but then what does that look like since we don't know the site? Like, how, how does this work in the world of Ms. Clayback? How does Ms. Clayback get from approval today to identifying a location and then proceeding in that regard? And then also, I'm just gonna also ask you to update everyone on where we're at with the actual project, because again, two separate projects.
Well, let's stick to the one.
Yes, and then...
Let's just stick with the one, then.
Well, I would like her, but, but I think people need to know.
Afterwards, but...
Yeah, okay, we'll just, we'll get that. Let's get to what we're talking about, give the update, and then... Because we, I think if we can do them simultaneously as quick as possible...
That's the goal.
The first step is to get today's approved. Before you, there is a three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-dollar estimate from the vendor for the lift station parts and pieces. We've built some contingency into that, so that we'd, if there's an increase in the expense, we don't have to come back to you all again and again and again for change order. So this process takes at, at a half a million dollars of approval. We'll take care of the purchase of the lift station, as well as all the piping requirements and the installation of the lift station. So it is a complete package that you're approving today to get our primary pipes connected to the lift station, install the lift station, and get the force main pumping back out so that it gets evacuated.
So when we identify the location, do we have to do something to then actually do the installation?
When we identify the location, that's gonna determine how much pipe work we have to do.
But also, that will come back to us.
So the location, you're not approving the location today, you're approving the amount so that we can move forward with the purchase.
If at four o'clock today, you find a location you think will work, what do we need, twenty-four hours? We'll have a meeting Friday at four o'clock. You know, I mean, I'm serious about that. I'm not, I'm not trying to be joking, but if we need to, you know... We'll, we will set the meeting to get it where we're not waiting till the next meeting. I mean, that's how important I think all of this is, and that's, that's what I think that we'll build the trust, that if we can do it, communication and all that. So, Ms. Moore, did you have something else?
Well, it was just, can you tell, you know, not, I don't wanna belabor any points or take time, but can you tell us where you are with lift station Three?
We've done a preliminary engineering report for that, that has sized all the components, the pumps, what the panel configuration needs to look like, how big the force main needs to be to push the, the water out. All of that has been completed. We now have to set it in the ground. We know how big everything needs to be, and we have more than adequate space behind the existing lift station Three to build the new station. So that, that's, the design time for that is about nine months. Then we put it out to bid, well, we design and permitting, because we have to permit it with DEP. Then we'll put it out to bid, and then they'll start construction. And going through the bid process right now is about ninety days, maybe a little bit longer, depending. So we're looking at a full year before we see a shovel in the ground.
For lift station Three?
Right.
But can we be doing pipes in the road during that time? Can we be doing, you know, other things that will be making it when it's ready? You can not say, okay, do this, and then this, and then this. Can they be running at the same time?
While we're doing the design of lift station Three and putting that out to bid and constructing it, we're gonna be designing the collection system to put that in the road. And while it would be really easy to put the pipes in the road and say, "Oh, this is where we want it to go," we also have to have the surveys from all the properties to know that there's enough drop from the back of the house to the street so that the, the raw sewage runs, or all their discharge dishwater and everything else runs. There has, there's a slope based on the size of pipe that comes from their house to the, the pipe in the road. And because of the distance, you wanna make sure that those pipes are deep enough, and that...
All that can be running together, so then when that...
The design of that is gonna be running together.
We're not gonna wait to design something till after something's done.
No. Lift station Three will actually be built when we're putting the other out to bid because it is gonna take some time to do the design, to make sure that everybody is gonna have adequate service and appropriate slope and to get all the legal parts. So we're gonna be running the design of the collection system, getting all of the, the legal parts and pieces. We've got to have, and that's a discussion that we'll have to have with Mr. Rudisil to make sure that we have all of those things appropriately worded. And if there's a change in ownership, how does that work? Is this gonna run with the land? So there's some legal details that we need to work through on that as well. As well as come up with a restoration, well, I know what the restoration plan's gonna be, but to put it on paper, to assure everyone have pictures before and after of what the, the corridor looks like, to make sure that... to make sure that we're, we're putting it back to as good or better. Because that restoration is a huge impact on those, on those homes. So it, it's not just a access and put a line in, we've gotta restore that as well.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's again, if we can show that, meetings, communication, obviously, you know, it's gonna be that important to keep it going, I mean, and again, it is, it's a frustrating part for all of us. So, Ms. Coker?
Yeah, um, back to the topic with the temporary. I, I am committed that we should, in my opinion, I think we should do something today to get the process rolling, but I, all due respect to the other white meat, I can't eat that pork chop. That, that, I would have to know that that was gonna be my, that was there, there was nothing else available. So I really hope that we're committed to finding another location because, um, just in terms of just aesthetics, property values, I mean, that just, to me, there's gotta be a better way to do this. So I hope we can focus in on another loc, but I don't wanna hold it up anymore, I wanna get it moving. I feel like we're on borrowed time with that lift station three, so that's where I'm at.
I, I appreciate that commitment, I really, really do. To that question then, again, process. So I think you said that the location would have, we're, are we gonna have to have another meeting to?
Yes.
To actually say, okay, we've identified the location, now we're proceeding?
As a group, I think it, it would be prudent to present the location to all.
I wouldn't pick a location, cause I'd get blamed for it. I'd get the phone call.
I, I would like, I agree, and I, I would like for all of us to be a part of that process of the location identification before we put anything in the pork chop.
Yeah, last resort.
The pork chop was a starting point so that we could at least have a conversation because if we didn't put it someplace to start, we could never even have this conversation. It's.
Alright, so, great conversation, great, I hope the public out there thinks that they know where we're trying to work for. That, you know, we all are trying to get to that same direction where there's no discharges in the river. And this would be a worse discharge if that happened because partially treated compared to what you're flushing every day going right into the river, again, whoever thought of that? But, um.
They used to do it.
But that was what the time was. So basically, we need a motion to approve going forward with purchasing the equipment we need and the value of what's in there up to $355,000 right now?
And there's a contingency on that for the total project, so you'll not have to approve any additional funding. Sorry, you won't have to approve any additional funding as we move into it, it includes the piping estimate.
Mr. Rudesil, is there anything you see that should be stated any differently?
No, not at this point.
Mrs. Moore?
I think that's it for me for now.
Do you have a motion you'd like to make?
Sure, I move to proceed with the procurement of the temporary lift station with the location to be determined by council at a future date.
Second.
We've had.
We've already had discussion.
Deliberation and discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Carries approved five to zero. And a great discussion. Thank you, Mr. Perry and Mrs. Clayback. No pressure for the future.
It should be easy.
Unfinished business, Mr. Perry.
Mayor, Council, under item nine, unfinished business, the city administration would submit the extension of the contract between the city of Bradenton and the EDC. Uh, council mayor may remember.
So we need to pull it off, someone needs to pull it off the table.
Sir.
Motion to remove this item from where it was tabled?
Second.
Second, we have a motion, a second, pull it off the table by Ms. Barnaby and Vice Mayor Kramer. Start the vote in Ward four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Carries five to zero to pull it off the table. Now, we would need a motion to approve the first extension.
Motion to approve the first extension of the contract with the Bradenton Area Economic Development Corporation.
Second.
Alright, a motion by Ms. Barnaby and a second by Ms. Coachman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Carries five to zero, thank you very much. Alright, council reports, start in Ward two?
You always start with me.
No, I go with accounts.
I do too, every time.
Well, he always does. You check like the last three meetings, four meetings, five meetings.
You weren't here, you missed one.
I'm, yeah, I did miss one meeting. I would just like to say, uh, thank you to my colleagues and the staff. I got a nasty bug that, then I got the flu and then I got pneumonia. And I was pretty sick. And I appreciated being able to call people and get information and try to serve the citizens as well as I could while I was very much under the weather. But, um, I, I just appreciated everyone checking on me and, and trying to assist with what was going on and making sure that I didn't fall too far behind, so I appreciate it very much.
You can't get sick anymore because the brownies and the stuff just disappears from here, so. No more sickness now. Yeah, we were, you had it pretty good, so.
Trying to think, uh, but I, I don't believe I have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, it was very nice, our presentations earlier are, uh, the proclamations. When, it was nice of Martin and Dalton to bring his parents along today. But it was also very nice, the, the thing I took from it, other than the great partnership, is that's a lady who's head of an organization who's saying that we do it right. That the department, the city, the support we give does it right, and that's a national organization. And so, to get those kudos, it's nice to hear and it's, uh, another reason to make me proud to be sitting here instead of retired from what I did.
Ms. Moore?
Obviously, we have talked a lot about what is happening in at least one part of Ward four. But I, I appreciate it. I was also just gonna comment on Ms. Corbin's, uh, public comment with, to say that my family and I attended BAMFest and I know we're gonna get a more full report, but at least the Moore family received it well. And I, what I really wanted to nail, like hone in on about that was that I loved that it was free. I love that it did not require anyone to pay anything. So for what it's worth, when we get the report, at this moment, I'm very pleased with that it felt like something we offered to the community and it was very family friendly. And I would like to, if we, you know, to the extent that realize Bradenton wants to continue doing something like that, I, I loved the part. Breaking news, Lisa thinks BAMFest should be free. And I think that'll just do it for me today.
Ms. Coachman?
Okay, thank you. Just kinda wanna tag on to what Vice Mayor Kramer said, um, having the, um, proclamation to acknowledge the Autism Awareness Month. I've been wearing the T-shirt at school and so forth. And, and it is great to hear from a national organization that BPD is doing their thing. Because I know I see it a lot. So it's good, you know, to have other people recognize it. And, um, it was just some great proclamations today. A lot of really good discussion today. I hope no one takes me as a mad black woman today. I was just a little louder. I'm so sorry. Well, I'm not really, but. Well, um, that, that one, that one. I am, I apologize for, for really probably being a little louder than normal. But it was, it was somewhat emotional and I, I think it's important that we communicate. That was one of the things when I was running, it was like communicate, communicate, communicate. That's what we gotta do to, 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 uh, to reduce that gap between the community and its government. Cause right now, I think it's really important that we constantly reiterate to the public that everyone sitting up here and out there and in the offices back there and up there are working really hard to make this a better Bradenton. And historically, yeah, some things may have not been done correctly or may not have been done at all. But right now, this moment, and in these last few years, you have a council that's really trying to do the best for Bradenton and be equitable. And that's sometimes hard for some people to grasp, but Ward five is definitely still alive.
Ward one, Coker.
Okay, I absolutely, I mean, of course, I love all y'all. And when, and as far as the communication, totally agree. My point was just, I think to be effective, we have to kinda keep it, that's all I was meaning. And I think the communication, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that they feel like, like, they know what's going on. So that might be, um, you know, an indictment on us if, if they're feeling like they, they don't. We don't need them to all be scheduling meetings with, with all of our department heads, that's, that's kind of our job. So, um, but I think we're making great strides and I hope they will trust us, that we're committed to it. And, uh, I, I wanted to say that I'm really disappointed I was unable to attend BAMFest, but from all accounts, it was a huge success, so, so I'm assuming it will continue to go forward and we'll just continue to get better, so. I don't know anybody who's traveled recently on Allegiant Airlines. A friend of mine was traveling and sent me the big spread that was in there on their plane, uh, periodical, all about the equine adventure and so the causeway, we're making. We're making it big. But I think it really does kinda show you that, that they are, um, you know, they're ambassadors for us and they're doing a good job. A lot of people are, um, you know, really do enjoy it. So while we have to, you know, contend with some of the, you know, the things that come, that surround it, I'm glad that we haven't gotten rid of it. And I know we've taken flak over that, but I think it's a good thing.
I thought you were gonna say the crap.
Well, I was trying to be professional. And then I also wanna, okay, to my colleagues, I apologize, but I do wanna say congratulations to the University of Florida Gators on their national championship. It was an exciting game. Yeah, but you know what, it's good for our state and, um, so I did, did wanna congratulate y'all. I thought it was a great game and it was fun to watch and I was cheering for you, I really was. And, uh, so congratulations and the Marauders kicked off and, uh, Friday night's game promises to be exciting. I hope, uh, that everyone will come and support our, our hometown team, the Marauders. It's gonna be a fun season.
Friday night is the fireworks, Saturday night is the drone show. So the first time they've ever had a drone show there, so, thank you.
One is done.
So, um, obviously, just to kinda talk about the BAMFest, um, great event. It really was bridge to bridge, brought out a lot of different people that, that from 11 to seven. I think our vendors and everybody I've talked to, obviously, some of the food sold out earlier than they thought cause they don't wanna have too much. But they, uh, they realized that it was a wide variety of the community. And I think they really want to grow that next year, even to maybe even be in more than a one day event, tying in the players, the Village of the Arts, the Bishop, the, um, Art Center, the new Art Center open, where they can do different shows and I really think it works well. And I know the Village people that I talked to are very excited. Obviously, it's kinda Village of the Arts people, IMCA. If we could have them come and do it. Pay Center for Girls, uh, the Lucky Ducky Race is right there again this weekend, so we're having a lot of events going on. That really is good fundraisers because when it looks at it, these are fundraisers for our community that are helping children, that are helping people that need it. We saw the proclamations today, helping the community, doing things that can, um, really bring that up. Yeah, I had Go Gators on my, my list too, but, but no, it is a, you know, we all joke about some of that, but we do pull for our state because those are kids. Those are kids that will come back and even though they're a little older now, they'll come back to the communities that they're from. And I was glad to see, I mean, Houston, I think had one or two from Florida, so you felt bad for them being from Florida, but, but.
Not that bad.
Not that bad. And then just to talk about our discussion today, obviously, I know Mr. Perry wanted me to let him finish, but I thought it was important that we have the, the candid discussion because you look out in the audience now and maybe one or two citizens that are still here that, other than staff. And what we really gotta do is get more people involved that know things long term. Because the only time it really, you know, you get involved is when it affects you directly. But then it also affects another community when things happen or affects another community. And that's what, only thing I was saying about the collaboration, yeah, it does mean something. Because, and people, what they judge us on is what we charge them. And we have to do taxes, we have to do things, we have to do other things. And if we don't, aren't good stewards of the money, none of us are gonna be sitting up here. But that's why when we got lobbyists, when we got other things that I don't feel that we did a great job years ago, we did a great job with the staff getting $400,000 for this or $500,000 for that because they were able to do it. But now we're getting millions to help things and help all in, in doing things while growing the city. You're gonna see a lot of changes in here when, you know, this building in particular is getting closer and closer. You know, the police station is under construction and that's gonna be a great thing next year sometime towards the end of the year. I don't wanna get the chief emotional because, you know, she won't be there, but, but, uh, we might invite her back for a little ceremonial thing.
You will invite her back?
Oh, I will, okay. It depends how nice she is going now. We will definitely invite her back. Chief, and I'll let you do it, Chief Coe, to, to tell about the awards yesterday, once, you know, who got the awards and, and that for the 2024, but, um, I just wanna thank everybody for the dialogue today. Again, our citizens that were here left, you'd like, you know, would have liked them to be more engaged, but some of the things that were set up here, um, is they're only engaged as they wanna be. The information is out there, we're on TV, we're on YouTube, you can get it anytime you want to listen. So if there's any challenge, I'll look, I don't know where I'm looking at what camera, but look out there and say, get the information, be informed and know the facts. Because unfortunately, what I said after citizen comment, there's a lot of people out there that do not wanna put the facts out. And whether you like me or not, the Facebook cowards are out there. They're not Facebook warriors, they're not keyboard warriors, they're cowards. Get the truth. And, you know, I'm, I'm over all of the false information out there. And, you know, we talk about different things, but, you know, every two years, we have an election. You can make decisions then if we're not doing something good. But, you know, I could go on and it's frustrating when you see things that just aren't true. Chief?
I'll tell ya, um, you know, it's easy to get caught up into the negativity of a lot of stuff in the world and our state, even just in law enforcement, um, but moments like that yesterday at the awards ceremony, I think reminded all of us what, what it's all about. That was probably the, one of the most touching, touching ones we had. And I think it's because we picked such well-deserving representatives of our agency who really are just making a difference in everybody's lives and it was, it was a privilege. And I, I saw how we all just lingered there a little bit longer than the normal and I felt like you guys all felt the same. So, um, thanks for coming out, I really appreciate the support. On that same vein, uh, these autism shirts, as I already mentioned, uh, provided by the Bradenton Blue Foundation. I just wanna take a moment, um, several people up here, uh, recently, we, we just received a sizable contribution, I know, from, from you. We have a member of council who serves on the board. Um, we have a member of council who serves on the board, Mayor Brown, a contribution. You, you push all the time to, to try to get people to donate. And if we think about it, that's, um, it's a fledgling foundation still. Some foundations take decades, um, to get big and large and start doing great things. We finally, I think, are coming into our own after, um, about eight and a half years. And, uh, what they're accomplishing, this type of outreach, um, with, with autism, what we plan to do with that foundation, with our new regional training, um, center, what we've done for our officers with wellness and health, it's, um, it's nice to see. And so thank you all for your support of it and for wearing your shirts every Wednesday throughout the month. We're asking you to do it and any other time you want to wear it. Hey, it makes it easy for you in two weeks, right? But thank you, thank you for all that. That's it.
And, and again, I would like to thank the council women and council man for wearing your shirt today. I know that was kind of a little email that went out on Monday or Tuesday, whatever it was, but, but, uh, thank you for obliging in that, because I think it's important to keep, uh, doing the good things for our city and, and being the friendly city. And we're just happy to be here. Is there any other department heads? Mr. Perry?
Sorry, I believe Chief Gear might have some updates.
Okay, Chief Gear.
And so Fire Station Two update, speaking of the east side, uh, we've gotten a lot of inquiries as when that's going to be done. It's currently on time, scheduled for July, uh, completion. Uh, so you can see with the, uh, no, no offense, Chief, but all the red going onto the building, you know, starting to stand out a little more, so, uh, so that's, that's good news for the east side, good for us. Uh, a lot of the community's been inquiring about that. The ladder truck, believe it or not, that y'all, we ordered, it's been three and a half years ago, is actually going to be done middle of May and we'll be looking at a completion trip. It's kind of funny, but, uh, it's still in progress and it's got a completion date. Now, I just got the email. Uh, so that's good news as well. And if you, uh, see on the streets some new mini pumpers, uh, going around on calls, thank you so much. And, uh, those are in service as well and you'll see it, those at the, uh, outlying stations, uh, taking first-out calls. So appreciate y'all's help and appreciate you coming over for the, you and Mr. Perry for the swearing in. And, uh, we're trying to step our game up and, and do a little more for our personnel and, uh, recognize them, so we appreciate the help.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Singer, could you come forward for a minute? She's like, oh no. I know at our workshop, we're going to talk about some permitting things, but can you just give us, on the record, kind of our permitting now with the, you know, we heard the gentleman ask about some things. Give us just some updates on, you know, where we are with the hurricane coming out of it and all the different things that are happening and delays that sometimes aren't always our delay. It's the contractors and, and please, if there's questions, people just call.
Right, correct. Um, we have been working, um, especially with the people who have been hardest hit on the hurricane, trying to get out all those roofing permits, fence permits and the other kinds of, uh, damages that we had seen. And in particular, um, those that were impacted by flood, uh, there are certain FEMA requirements that we have going forward in those. And I know that, um, the building official and other members of our staff have been especially working on those. And particularly when people are trying to, um, get an owner or builder permit, it's, it's somewhat more cumbersome. Uh, but we've been giving them special attention to get their applications in and through, um, the system. We did, you know, implement that new, um, system right about the time the storms were coming through. If we delayed it, it would have been months in delay and we just felt, felt it was better to get those new permits in the new system, uh, to deal with them a little bit more efficiently. But we are working our way through, um, we get regular visits from FEMA, uh, to go through our progress, because they're always concerned about things they've seen in other communities. And so far, I think we are getting a, a good, um, uh, reading from them, uh, that we're doing things appropriately so that we don't have to go back and redo things. Um, it does, you know, cause some delays though in permitting. And so if you are getting calls on delays, uh, please have them call me, have them call the, uh, the building official, um, the deputy building official, Tamara Tornay. Um, we're all here to help, um, and we try to get on top of those if somebody has gotten lost in the system and try to figure out what the problem is and get them through.
Right, and one of the calls that I got and forwarded on, um, is that the, it's a condo or it's a multi number of families. And so they had different connected but not connected, different addresses and all that. And it was really about the builder putting it in the wrong way.
Yeah.
But one phone call clicked and it was the right way. So that's what we're saying. We're here, reach out. And if, if, if your builder does say something, that doesn't necessarily mean he's trying to not tell you the truth. It may be true, but it's because of the way it was entered and, and which, again, we haven't been through this before like this. So please reach out and, and everyone, you know, most times we just forward it to you.
Yeah.
Nothing special, but just it helps the process.
Right, correct.
Questions? Alright, thank you, sorry to put you on the spot.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I just have two things I kind of wanted to cover, which is very quick, but, uh, uh, I'm required to notify you of emergency purchases, uh, at the next council meeting. And so we did have an emergency purchase through Public Works that was done on three thirty-one twenty-five. It was a tree and shrub removal, was requested by Don Brunner, uh, to remove damaged trees and shrubs from a fence line. And then we also had one that just came to me this morning from Rebecca Dash over at Fire, which is an emergency purchase for an, an awning that was, uh, required, I believe at Station One, was it, Chief?
Yeah, Station One.
Yeah.
At the entry.
Just wanted to let you know about those two purchases. And just one last point, um, since you had Robin up there, you know, Lance and I went out to, uh, Twin Rivers and Braden Castle, um, and, and were just amazed at how it had kind of restored to its pre-hurricane, um, look. It was clean, it was tidy, it was repaired. And, you know, the gentlemen's that came in today, the folks that came in today were very complimentary, but they did a really good job out there, the folks, and I think their management teams as well, great community. And, uh, compared to what we had to deal with out there, um, how rough it looked and the despair on those people's faces, understandably, um, it's nice to see the sunshine tomorrow.
And that goes back to, that, like you said, the management and some of the residents that really helped others, you know, worked out. And I went through there about two weeks ago, um, maybe a little longer with the trailer on a Saturday. And don't look at me, Lance, but, um, just talking to people again and getting some stuff. And it's, it's just, you know, some of them are still struggling, you know, and especially in Braden Castle Park, more than, um, Two Rivers and Braden Castle. But, but we're only six months out, you know, and still, we're six months out. You can say it either way, but things are going to turn around and we're only two months out from June first. Alright, anything else for the good of the whole? If not, we'll be adjourned to thank you.